Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's November 6, 2014 meeting. For all present, this meeting today is being livestreamed, so speakers do know that you will be on the NCPC website being livestreamed. There is a quorum, and we'll call the meeting officially to order and proceed with the agenda as has been publicly noticed. However, without objection, I hope, for various reasons, we will change 5C and 5D. We'll just swap those and take 5D in place of 5C. I will note that we have 20 people signed up to speak today on various topics, 20 people over three items. So, commission members, if you would, help move this along efficiently with your comments. That would be very helpful. Agenda item number one is a report of chairman, and I have no significant report today. Agenda item number two is a report of the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the interest of time, I'll note that you have a written report in your packets. I only have one announcement. NCPC, in collaboration with the Smithsonian Institution, is conducting a public scoping on the proposed National Air and Space Museum Building Revitalization Project. And we're going to hold a joint public scoping and Section 106 meeting here at NCPC on Wednesday, November 12, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we welcome the public to attend that meeting. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Costa? Hearing none. Agenda item number three is a legislative update. Ms. Skylar?
I have one item. It's kind of an exciting item, too. It's called the Department of Energy Forestal Complex Redevelopment Act. It was a bill introduced by Representative Eleanor Holmes Norton in July, and it directs the administrator of the General Services Administration, using authorities that he has available to him, to redevelop the Department of Energy's forestal complex, and it requires that the redevelopment be consistent with the NCPC Southwest Eco-District Plan and the Office of Planning Maryland Avenue Plan. The bill right now is in committee, or subcommittee, and we'll keep you apprised of its status.
What is the bill number?
Oh, I didn't write it down. I'm sorry, sir.
That's all right. We'll look it up later. Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Skylar? Agenda item number four is the consent calendar. We have just one item. Item 4A is the closing of public streets adjacent to squares S-603, N-661, 605, 661, 607, 665, and reservations 243 and 244. Any questions on that one consent calendar item? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded by Mr. May and Ms. White, respectively. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye. Opposed, no. It's passed. Agenda item number 5A is the master plan for the Washington Navy Yard. We have Mr. Carlton Hart.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The Navy has submitted a final master plan for the Washington Navy Yard. The commission last reviewed a draft of this master plan in this past June. As you may recall, the commission has reviewed a number of Naval District Washington installation master plans over the last year or so. This map shows the location of the Washington Navy Yard, which is in southeast Washington, D.C., as well as other installations that the Navy has administered. Several years ago, Naval District Washington developed a regionally integrated master program, also known as the RIMP. And the RIMP is composed of several planning documents, and the RIMP provides broad master planning recommendations for the entire Naval District Washington region. It also includes broad-brush planning direction for individual installations as well. The Navy then refined these recommendations at the installation level by developing specific facility master plans, such as this one. So, this is the Washington Navy Yard in its location. To the east of the Navy Yard, the Navy Yard is outlined in black. To the east of the Navy Yard is the 11th Street Bridge Complex. North is M Street. To the west is the yard development and the Department of Transportation. And then to the south is the Anacostia River. It's approximately 76 acres. The Washington Navy Yard has evolved substantially since its inception in the late 1700s. Initially, it was established as a shipbuilding yard and maintenance facility. In World War I, it was changed into a production facility. During World War II, it was changed to a research and testing facility, and then finally, it has been changed to an administrative center, which it is today. Like previous Navy master plans, the Washington Navy Yard includes a vision statement that you see here. This master plan builds upon the historic heritage of the site as a premier installation with distinctive headquarters, first-class support facilities, and attractive green spaces that enable high-quality life within the urban setting of Washington, D.C. The master plan's structure is two different components, a five-year, short-term component, which is called the Master Plan Program. And this is a, basically, some of the projects have been approved or have been funded or are being planned in the near term. And then there's the framework plan, which is a longer 20-year component, and this is composed of a series of plans and associated strategies that provide comprehensive, long-range planning intended to guide future planning, programming, and budgeting decisions at the Navy Yard. There's also a transportation management program that describes strategies and policies for the Navy to use to help promote alternative modes of commuting for employees at the Navy Yard. The Navy has also used the guiding principles that you see here. These guiding principles are ones that it has identified for the installations in this The commission, as I said, reviewed the draft master plan in June, and so I didn't want to go into a lengthy description of the existing conditions, but I wanted to hit a few points that I think that would be of interest. First, that the employee population of the Navy Yard is approximately 18,000 people and is expected to grow modestly by 530 people over the next five years. 75% of the land uses are in three main categories, and those are administrative, parking, and open space. So, three-quarters of the site is dedicated to those land uses. Nearly a third to a half of the Navy Yard is either in the 100- or 500-year floodplain, and that's shown in the image, the map on the upper right. The Navy Yard currently has 4,777 parking spaces, employee parking spaces, and 5,000, nearly 5,000 parking spaces overall. And then finally, the historic preservation is important in the site, given that the installation was founded in the late 1700s, as I noted earlier, and that the average age of buildings on the Navy Yard is over 90 years. So, I'll change a little bit the way that we normally go through reviews. In this case, the next few slides that I'll be presenting is going to be an analysis focusing on the Navy's response to the commission's comments, which the commission provided in June. These are a list of the changes or alterations to the plan that the commission had requested at that time. We generally were supportive of the plan, but made these comments to make improvements to the plan. The commission did not support the, in June, the commission did not support the draft framework plan because it didn't adequately describe how the Navy would address long-term issues like parking, stormwater management, conference space, and environmental sustainability. And just to let you know, I'm paraphrasing this, though I'm not reading directly. The commission did not support the 1:4 parking ratio, but noted that we could support a slightly reduced parking ratio if improvements to stormwater management, reduction in impervious surface, and improved parks and open space were included in the final master plan. And finally, the commission requested that the Navy include a 100-foot buffer along the Anacostia River, or its area along the Anacostia River, increase the amount of uses in the West Activity Hub, and I'll describe that in a few slides, and designate an area for administration or cultural uses in the southeastern portion of the installation. So, the framework plan that is now being proposed, you see that the comparison between the draft master plan and the final master plan, the final master plan is on the right-hand side. Regarding the commission's first concern about the draft framework plan not providing an adequate understanding of how the plan will guide development in the future, the Navy has made some changes in the final framework plan that you see here, and I'll kind of step through them. They are more thoughtfully identifying how the plan will guide future development. They've added retail, or identified retail. This is the, this building is Building 76, which is shown here on the right-hand slide, the side of the slide. It is the museum of the U.S. Navy, and the northern portion of that, the Navy is actually identifying as a retail location. Identifying which buildings would be renovated and reused, and these are the kind of numbers that you see on the map. Increase the amount of open space on campus. This is going to be the new Admiral Willard Park, as well as some more open space along the Anacostia River. So, it's a buffer that they're proposing for the river that was not in the draft master plan on the left-hand slide. They are increasing, excuse me, decreasing the amount of parking spaces on campus, as well as removing some impervious surface. This road in particular is being removed or moved onto this parking lot, and then some areas here also being removed. So, these are all seen as being things that the commission would be supportive of. While the commission was not supportive of the 1:4 parking ratio, it was willing to look at possibly relaxing the 1:5 parking ratio goal that's identified in the comp plan. The Navy has responded by proposing a 1:1, excuse me, a 1:4.5 to 5 parking ratio in the long-term plan, and that's shown here. The Navy is adopting the commission recommendation and proposing to reduce the overall number of parking spaces by 200, which will reduce the amount of impervious surface on campus by over 2 acres, and increasing the amount of stormwater management resources. And again, it's the roadway and parking lot that's being reduced in this location. There's a parking lot that's being removed, and parking lot that actually is being added, and I'll talk about that in an upcoming slide. So, staff is supportive of the proposed 1:4.5 to 5 parking ratio that's now being proposed for the installation for a few reasons. One, because the installation is located in the, on the edge of the 2,000-foot radius, and this is the radius from the nearest metro station. It's intended to reduce overall parking on the site, and it's proposing to add open space on the slight, excuse me, the installation, and that includes the 100-foot buffer that I was describing earlier. For enhancing open space, staff is in favor of these changes as they are supported by the comp plan policies directed at reducing the amount of impervious surface near rivers and reducing parking spaces that will help the installation move towards meeting its new parking ratio goal. However, staff does not support the construction of the new parking area as identified in the long-range framework plan because it is counter to the comprehensive plan, open-space element, which discourages long, large, surface parking areas along the riverfront. In addition, this new parking area is being placed on an existing park that is considered to have some historic significance. For these reasons, staff would recommend that the commission not support this new parking area, and that the Navy reconsider this parking area as it develops and update to the master plan in five years. Next, with regard to the commission's request to add retail uses at the Western Activity Hub and designating the north end of West Admiral Lutz Park for retail, these are two, the draft master plan and the final master plan activity hub comparisons. In the draft master plan, the northern portion of the museum building is not designated as a retail area. They've done that, they've changed this, and also added this as being a possible employment or administrative use in the future, as well as the Eastern Activity Hub having a little expansion onto that, as well as adding in some more administrative uses on the site as well. And these are things that the commission had asked for in the future. One of the, in the June, at our June action, commission action, one of the things, this site, this is Admiral Lutz Park, or West Admiral Lutz Park. There are some steep slopes on the site that would make construction on the site fairly The Navy is increasing the amount of open space on the installation. This 100-foot buffer is provided for additional stormwater treatment, as well as including the berm, which is intended to provide flood protection for the installation. I'd also like to note that as the installation is along the Anacostia River and more prone to the rise in sea level, that's been associated with climate change, staff encourages the Navy to begin coordinating with local and federal stakeholders to better understand how sea level rise might impact the installation, and this information should be then incorporated into the next master plan in five years. And given the number of housing units that are located nearby and ones that are currently under construction, as well as the need to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicles at the installation, staff is encouraging the Navy to work with local agencies and organizations to discuss the possibility of implementing a live-near-your-work program at the Navy Yard. And with that, the executive director recommends that the commission approve the final master plan at the Washington Navy Yard, with the exception of the proposed conversion of the existing Admiral Willard Park to a surface parking lot, as it is considered to have historic significance, and conversion is not consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. Notes that all installation master plans are required to be in conformance with the new Department of Defense Unified Facilities Criteria, and therefore recommends that the next update of the Washington Navy Yard master plan, the Navy should reconsider the proposed conversion of Willard Park to surface parking, and instead either permanently reduce the installation parking supply or consolidate the parking into existing garages. That the commission support the requested 1:4.5 to 5 parking ratio, as the Navy is reducing parking at the installation and adding open space. That the commission support the Navy's efforts to strengthen the open space system by creating a 100-foot buffer, removing a roadway from the close proximity to the river, and expanding Admiral Willard Park. Encourage the Navy to coordinate all the relevant, to coordinate with all the relevant stakeholders to discuss the, discuss and develop a live-near-your-work incentive program at the Navy Yard. And finally, encourages the Navy to factor in climate change in the next update of the Navy Yard master plan. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I have a question regarding the long-term proposed new surface parking lot along the river. That's long-term, not short-term. So, long, short-term, are those currently funded and planned?
They are, they are planned, some are funded, but that parking lot is not included, and that's a 20-year.
Okay. So, when does the long-term kick in?
From, basically, from five years.
Five years up, okay. So, a question about a recommendation. We approve the master plan with the exception of, and then we note that we recommend that they reconsider. Why not just outright not approve it, instead of the fuzzy language?
They're looking at it as a longer, a longer idea, and so they're going to have to go through a series of iterations of their master plan, and so in five years, we're saying that you should be reconsidering that and looking at some other, another use, maybe it's an expansion of the open space or something else, but right now, it just didn't seem like it made sense to.
It's too early to be too.
Yeah, because it's a long-term thing. It's not, they're not saying that we're going to do that, you know, in the short term. So, I thought, we thought we had some time to be able to work with.
Sure. Other questions?
Thank you very much. I wasn't here in June, but I see where there had been, in previous actions, there had been a cap on employment, and that cap, is that cap expressly removed?
We did not expressly remove it. It was, and it's something we had discussed in, you're right, in previous master plans, the 1990 master plan, I recall that one. And they've gone over that cap, I think it was at 10,000 employees at that point, and so that was 20, 20, am I doing that right? 24 years ago? And they're now up to 18,000, and possibly going up higher than that.
And is there any, is there any function for a cap? I mean, just curious about the history of a cap, what its function is. Is it, so not too many people move from the other states to work there? I mean, is this a way to portion it out? What is the function of the cap?
Actually, that was such a long time ago. We've, we really haven't done any caps at any other facilities that I'm aware of in the last 10 years at least, probably longer than that. And I can understand us doing that to possibly have maybe a different distribution of employees at different installations, but honestly, I'm not sure why the cap was originally there.
And so, there is no cap now?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the caps have, caps are problematic now because, because with mobile work and we're not counting bodies necessarily, we're counting seats, right? So, it seems to me that a cap, the cap has to do with transportation planning, and so my question, in the absence of a cap, I'm curious about this 1.45-ish parking ratio in the absence of a, what I understand, or maybe I missed it, a full-fledged TMP. It's, I mean, it seems kind of mushy to me. We're kind of, it's like, I get, I understand the trade-off, but in the absence of a cap with, what, has there been a full-fledged TMP done? And it's, go ahead.
They did provide a TMP with the master plan. The TMP really has the 18,530 people that they're expecting, that they're talking about as part of that.
Right.
But they're not looking beyond that because that's really what they're, they kind of know that they'd be able to, to work with, or at least have at the short term.
So, that's directly tied to this 18.5 number?
Yes.
Is there somebody from the Navy here?
Yes, yes, there are a few folks here.
Hi.
Good afternoon, ma'am. Respectfully, the Public Works Officer for the Navy Yard.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question about workplace. So, your projections for 530 people over the next, how many years?
Five to 20 years.
But till you get to the long-term. So, and that's based on, is the Navy undertaking any of this, of what the rest of us are doing in terms of workplace consolidation, where you have desk sharing and hoteling and utilization rates in your buildings that are not kind of the typical 300 to 400 square feet that we often find in other federal agencies?
Yes, ma'am. Well, if I can kind of break that up into a couple of different, I think, comments or responses. One is, we are encouraging, you know, teleworking is a very big deal for us, so yes, we do have people, I'm going to call it hot-desking, but to some extent, they do, because I have many commands. And you talk about, you know, the cap, you know, over the last 10 years, we've had a lot of BRAC lease consolidation. We tried to get out of leases. So, yes, that did increase the population there in the Navy Yard. So, now we are increasing things like teleworking. There are commands that don't have enough desks, so what they are doing is they are utilizing the same desk and/or working from home, if they can do that, and flex work hours. There are a lot of things that we are looking.
So, 530 seems a very modest increase, projection to me, over five years. If you have an 18,000-seat campus, right, and so, I'm not a math genius, but that's not a very, that's not a very aggressive increase. So, I'm just wondering if it's accurate. Given, given all of these different work strategies that are being undertaken throughout the government, it seems a very low figure. So, what happens if it turned, what happens if you find that you're, that the Navy decides to undertake a much more aggressive strategy?
And ma'am, when you say aggressive, are you referring to the number of bodies, potentially more?
The number of people, the way we refer to it is, because we're still in this debate about the mathematics of figuring this out, but the best solution we've come up with so far is counting the number of seats. If you have 18,000 seats and you have a robust, you know, desk-to-employee ratio, let's, when we say even, you know, 1.3 is pretty aggressive, you're looking at a much more dramatic increase in numbers. I'm just asking if you all have thought about what happens if you find yourselves in a situation where you're looking at maybe 23,000 people using, calling the Navy Yard home?
Well, ma'am, right now, as of this time, based on planners, of course, I have a couple of them here, we don't expect to grow too much more than that. As a matter of fact, even the 18,000 number that I have now, we are bulging at the seams. Some of the ways we do do that are that we reconfigure spaces, we tighten up the cubicle sizes that we have. So, maybe a few years ago, a person that had, I think we talked about this last time a little bit, a captain or commander like myself who had a large office or a large cubicle, we're reconfiguring to try to get more, to even meet this 18,000.
So, do you know, what is the current utilization rate on the campus right now? I mean, in, with this plan? The square footage per employee?
I'd have to get the number, ma'am. We have a basic facility requirements that tell us how many each one is to get, and I, we have a number off the top of my head. I don't have that, but we can get that answer back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Just to help me understand, the parking, the parking ratio, that is a minimum of floor or a maximum? How does the, so.
The one of the 4.5-ish that we talked about.
Right. Is that up to that, or that you must provide that?
We, these are the guidelines that we are, that's the goal that we're striving towards.
So, but are you required to provide that much parking, the way this is written? Or is that a maximum, or is that a minimum? Does that make sense?
It's the max.
It's the max.
So, you could provide less if you wanted to?
We could, yes, sir.
Under this plan? And currently, parking is still free there, correct? And you plan for it to stay free?
It's free.
And are there any other federal guidelines around free parking? Is it all generally to be free? I mean.
Well, on any of our military installations.
It's always free.
We don't charge for parking, yes, sir.
GSA charges for parking.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, on DoD installations, we do not charge for parking.
And are you not allowed to charge for parking?
I'll have to look into that, which hasn't been done, doesn't say that it's, there might be something there, but I'll look at that, sir, and get back to you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Hart, or hearing none? Is there a motion on the EDR? It's been moved and seconded, that the EDR, as before you, be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Agenda item number 5B is the draft, draft master plan of Fort Belvoir. We have Ms. Kelly.
Yep. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The Department of the Army has submitted the draft real property master plan for Fort Belvoir for the commission's review and comment. The commission last approved a master plan for Fort Belvoir in 1993 with a sub-area plan approval in 2002. At that time, the commission requested that the Army update the entire Fort Belvoir master plan, and the Army was working on that update when the 2005 BRAC recommendations were approved, which proposed adding approximately 20,000 employees to Fort Belvoir. Due to. Due to the tight timeline of BRAC and stimulus funding, the Army did not undertake this current master plan update until BRAC was completed in two thousand and eleven in order to have BRAC projects be the baseline for growth of Fort Belvoir. Since that time, the Army has met with NCPC staff and Fairfax County multiple times about the update and submitted the draft for staff-level review. The Army then made changes to the document based on those comments and submitted the revised draft to the Commission. So a little context about Fort Belvoir. It's located approximately seventeen miles south of Washington, DC. And it's separated into two parcels, the first being Main Post located along the Potomac River and then Fort Belvoir North Area located just north of ninety-five. Fort Belvoir is similar to a small town. It is home to approximately a hundred and forty Department of Defense organization, has about twenty-one hundred housing units. It has commercial and retail uses, hotels, community centers, a hospital, a university, and an elementary school. Fort Belvoir Main Post can be subdivided into four areas. You have South Post located here and then Southwest Area, just north of I-95, which by sex, the installation is North Post. Fairfax County Parkway traverses the installation as well and separates North Post and the Davison Army Airfield. Fort Belvoir South Post is the largest sub-area with two thousand five hundred and fifty acres and approximately fifteen thousand six hundred employees. Of the sub-areas, it feels the most dense and developed. It hosts a variety of uses such as housing, professional, medical, and community uses. The South Post is also home to the Fort Belvoir Historic District and also has a small town center on 12th Street with retail shops on the bottom and residential units on top. The next highest employment area for Fort Belvoir is North Post, which has approximately two thousand two hundred and fifty acres and houses around fourteen thousand employees. Like South Post, it hosts a variety of uses. It feels a little less dense than South Post. Many of the professional uses have larger setbacks and a few agencies have separated campuses with their own security. The North Post is home to the Fort Belvoir PX and the commissary and the Fort Belvoir Golf Course. The Fort Belvoir North Post will also be the home to the future National Museum of the United States Army, which you can see here, that the Commission has previously approved. The Southwest Area of Fort Belvoir is a large undeveloped tract at approximately twenty-one hundred acres. The primary use of the Southwest Area is training and also includes a fourteen hundred acre wildlife refuge. No employees are stationed in the Southwest Area. The last section of Fort Belvoir Main Post is the Davison Army Airfield, which is an active Army airfield and is approximately eight hundred acres in size. Approximately twelve hundred employees are located on this part of Fort Belvoir. Fort Belvoir North Area is also eight hundred acres and houses approximately eight thousand six hundred employees. It is home to the National Geospatial Agency. You can see their building and their parking garage located here, which was a move brought about because of the two thousand and five BRAC. The draft for Fort Belvoir Real Property Master Plan includes three documents, the Installation Vision and Development Plan, a Transportation Management Plan, and an Installation Planning Standards Plan, which I will summarize in the upcoming slides. Something a little different than we normally do, after each document, I will go over the Executive Director's recommendation regarding that specific document rather than at the end of the presentation. So don't get too excited when you see the first Executive Director's recommendation. We're not, we won't be finished then. And then I'll also do that for, after we talk about the master plan EIS and the comments received during the referral process. The Installation Vision and Development Plan is the big-picture document of the master plan and will serve as a guide for how Fort Belvoir will grow through two thousand and thirty. In the beginning of the master plan update process, the Army hosted a series of visioning workshops with the tenants of Fort Belvoir and developed the following vision statement and guiding principles. The vision states that Fort Belvoir is an outstanding place to work, train, and live that embraces a culture of diversity, innovation, and challenge while continuing its legacy as a beautiful-to-see installation. Belvoir in French means beautiful view, and one can see throughout the master plan documents a commitment by the Army to maintain the natural features of Fort Belvoir as much as possible. The master plan also includes eight guiding principles listed here on the screen, some of which include achieving environmental sustainability, supporting the natural habitat, and improving multimodal connectivity. After the visioning work, the Army evaluated the existing conditions on Fort Belvoir to determine what areas are and are not available for development. The Army mapped the natural resources, cultural and operational resources, essentially mapping where the areas of Fort Belvoir are not suitable for development. You can see two examples on the screen. The one on the left is wetlands and the one on the right is steep slopes. The Army combined all the environmental constraints to determine the developable area on Fort Belvoir, which is shown here on the map. The white area is the constrained land and the tan area the Army has identified as developable. Of the eight thousand five hundred acres on Fort Belvoir, the Army has determined that approximately three thousand four hundred acres are developable, or about forty percent of the land area. And you can see here that mostly that is along the plateau of Fort Belvoir, along the spine. And then it drops off as you get closer to the river. Next, the Army evaluated the existing land use and any changes that needed to occur for Fort Belvoir to grow. In the EIS for implementing the two thousand and five BRAC recommendations, the Army analyzed land use and adopted the land use that is shown here on the left. The two thousand and five BRAC recommendations dramatically changed the installation, moving it from a more troop-training facility to an administration installation. The Commission did not approve the BRAC land use map, but reviewed all projects related to BRAC. Here you can see the proposed land use map in the draft master plan. The numbers highlight the proposed changes from the current land use map with the proposed land use. The highest change is the loss of approximately a hundred and ten acres of industrial land use and the gain of approximately thirteen, a hundred and thirteen acres of professional land use, bringing the total of professional land use at Fort Belvoir to two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight acres. The proposed land use map continues the trend of Fort Belvoir becoming a more professional administration facility. The Installation Vision and Development Plan includes a framework plan that serves as a blueprint to control, coordinate, and direct change at Fort Belvoir. The framework plan provides a structure to guide long-term development and includes development parcels based on land use, roadway circulation, and open space. In the master plan, the framework plan is then expanded upon to show the categories more in-depth. You'll see that in the next couple of slides. I'd like to point out here that the Southwest Area has developable parcels. However, the Army is not proposing any development within the Southwest Area, which staff fully supports. Once the Army identified all development parcels on Fort Belvoir, they analyzed which parcels should be redeveloped in the upcoming years. The intent of the development plan is to infill development in order to increase density and to leverage existing infrastructure. Other goals include concentrate redevelopment in the core, redevelop aging facilities to encourage redevelopment on surface parking lots, and to build structured parking. The development plan recommends what parcels should be developed in the short term. In the two thousand and seventeen timeframe, you can see those parcels here in yellow. As well as in the long-term, up to two thousand and thirty, those parcels are here in blue. These pictures on the left show areas that the Army is proposing for redevelopment. You can see this building up here on top will be demolished to allow for additional roadway circulation as well as to allow for higher, more denser buildings. The bottom, the picture on the bottom shows, you can see on the right, the South Post Town Center. And the Army proposes to rebuild the area across the street with additional retail and housing units to provide a more main-street feel. The framework plan also proposes roadway circulation on the installation. The Army's goal is to strengthen a street grid pattern by increasing east-to-west circulation throughout the South Post. The Army is also proposing an additional crossing across Route One located here. Currently, there is only one crossing from North Post to South Post located along Gunston Road. The Army is also proposing to continue the loop road around Fort Belvoir North Area. So this map on the left shows what the Army is proposing for the two thousand and thirty long-term roadway circulation at Fort Belvoir. And the map on the right shows what needs to occur in order for that to happen. So the long-term projects are in green and the short-term projects are in red. The framework plan also includes strategies for multimodal circulation. The goal of the multimodal plan is to bolster the existing infrastructure network for an integrated and efficient means of travel other than the car. The plan includes potential transit centers, a commuter services center, and proposed transit corridor along the existing Fort Belvoir rail line located here. Here you can see one of those proposed transit centers at the Fort Belvoir South Post Town Center. The framework plan also includes a strategy on housing development. The Army has determined that Fort Belvoir needs approximately two thousand one hundred and six housing units to accommodate demand. This amounts to approximately seven thousand five hundred residents at Fort Belvoir. The housing plan proposes replacing units lost in the redevelopment of the River Village neighborhood as well as the Doe Creek neighborhood. And the Army will replace those units next to Woodlawn, an existing neighborhood, to reinforce the North Post Town Center as well as that South Post Town Center, which you've seen before. And then additionally, onto the Gerber Village. You can see, this picture on the left is an existing housing unit in Gerber Village. As I stated, I'll go over the Executive Director's recommendation for each of the plans after I summarize them. So regarding the vision plan, staff finds the master plan is very thorough. The current draft master plan addresses many comments and issues raised by NCPC in Fairfax County during the past several consultation meetings and reviews. Staff finds the draft master plan has the potential to provide the Commission with the necessary context to review future projects and overall supports the vision and guiding principles. We commend the Army for reducing impacts on natural features by directing development on non-constrained land and out of the Southwest Area. It is therefore the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission support the vision and goals of the master plan document and request that the Army evaluate the following prior to submitting the final master plan. Environmental mitigation areas. In two thousand and twelve, the Commission requested that Fort Belvoir master plan include a vegetation plan in order to analyze location for vegetation replacement. The Army's tree replacement policy also allows for out-of-kind environmental mitigation if tree replacement is unattainable. While the Army does provide a vegetation plan in the master plan, which is up here on the screen, staff finds that it lacks adequate detail and recommends the Army continue to evaluate additional locations for planting, such as along the shoreline and the buffer area between the airfield and the surrounding community. Given that the Army's policy allows out-of-kind mitigation, staff requests that the vegetation plan be expanded to include other mitigation measures that may be undertaken, such as stormwater management upgrades, removal of impervious surfaces, stream restoration, conservation areas, and remediation areas. The map should then go on to identify these projects by priority. I would like to note that the master plan does include stream restoration and refuge mitigation areas and recommends that these areas and the vegetation plan be expanded to include the other mitigation measures and be shown on one map. Next, potential sea level rise and its effect on developable areas. Given Fort Belvoir's location along the Potomac River and sea level, and that sea level is anticipated to rise in the future, staff requests that the Army evaluate potential sea level rise within the timeframe of the master plan. As I stated earlier, a lot of the development on Fort Belvoir is along a plateau. So most of the development will probably not be impacted by potential sea level rise. But there are some development parcels along the river that may be impacted. Also, the Army should evaluate if existing uses should be relocated due to flooding from potential sea levels or if measures should be undertaken to protect these assets. And location for sustainable energy uses. While Fort Belvoir is known Elliot's Air Force Base in Nevada, given the requirements for federal agencies to reach net zero and to increase its use of green energy production, within the framework plan, the Army should evaluate potential locations for green energy, such as solar farms or wind energy, and evaluate any impact on the potential development parcels. The Navy has, or the Army has recently seen this through the review of Department of Navy master plans. The Fort Belvoir master plan includes an Installation Planning Standards Plan. If the vision and development plan guides development to two thousand and thirty, the Installation Planning Standards guides how that development will look and promotes visual order and architectural consistency throughout Fort Belvoir. As part of the IPS, the Army identified planning districts throughout Fort Belvoir and created regulating plans for each district. So you can see an example of one of the regulating plans here on the screen. It identifies a lot of goals the Army has for site planning, such as continuous building wall, reintroduction of the street grid onto Fort Belvoir. It also includes building layout, potential entrances, as well as potential height of those buildings. In addition to the site planning standards, the IPS includes building material standards based on the character of the surrounding buildings in a given district. This includes standards on roofing material and exterior building material and color, as well as site furniture. So you can see, one of the ones on the slide is for the Historic Core and what materials are allowed to be used within that district. And an example of new construction within the Historic Core is located in this picture. And you can see how it fits nicely within Fort Belvoir's historic district. The Executive Director recommends that the Commission encourage the Army to evaluate LID standards for roadways and parking areas and standards for permeable pavement. The IPS includes design standards based on roadway classification. And we recommend that the Army analyze the use of low-impact development tree box filters as part of roadway stormwater management, particularly in denser developments on North and South Post. LID tree box filter standards should be included in the IPS and encouraged in the roadway design standards. In addition, the Army should evaluate including permeable pavement standards within the IPS. Staff commends the Army for using permeable pavement throughout Fort Belvoir, for which some examples you can see here on the screen. The IPS should identify which types work best and recommend materials and dimension standards. Staff will note that the Army has done a great job implementing environmental site design for its stormwater management. The recommendations are just to question that the Army evaluate what has previously been done, what works, what doesn't work, so that standards can be included in the IPS. The draft Fort Belvoir master plan also includes a transportation management plan. Prior to undertaking this master plan update, the Army did not have an approved TMP for Fort Belvoir. However, to mitigate traffic impacts for the two thousand and five BRAC recommendations, the Army has created an employee transportation coordinator position at Fort Belvoir and has implemented telework and an alternative work schedules. Also, during the BRAC timeframe, the Army adopted a policy that any new administration building project will provide parking for no more than sixty percent of employees. This was implemented with all BRAC projects and staff has seen the parking numbers decrease at Fort Belvoir as the Army redevelops areas. This TMP builds off the strategies already implemented and proposes new strategies to reduce single occupancy vehicle usage. I'd like to note that the Fort Belvoir TMP is an umbrella document that proposes strategies that the installation can do to support its tenants, as well as modal split goals for the installation as a whole. Agency-level TMPs- Agency-level TMPs will be developed addressing more site-specific strategies. The TMP includes a parking assessment of the existing parking on the installation. The Army inventoried all the parking and found that there are currently approximately 32,000 parking spaces throughout Fort Belvoir. The table shows the draft TMP's proposed parking ratio for the different subareas for the 2017 timeframe and the long 2030 timeframe. In the short term, the Army proposes a parking ratio of 1 to 1.27 and a 1 to 1.37 in the long term for Fort Belvoir as a whole. In order to reduce the amount of parking on Fort Belvoir, the draft TMP proposes the reduction in SOV use from 81% to 75% in 2017. To reach this goal, the Army proposes an increase in carpool and vanpool by 2% and an increase in public transit by 2%. Additional reduction will be met in an increase in alternative work schedules. For the long term, the Army proposes to reduce SOV usage to 60%. In order to meet this goal, the Army proposes an increase in carpool and vanpool use by 2%, an increase in public transit by 8%, and telework and alternative work schedules by 3% over the 2017 levels. The draft TMP includes a list of potential strategies to reach the proposed modal splits. The list includes short-term, midterm, and long-term strategies and focuses on parking management, agency coordination, regional collaboration, information outreach, mobility choices, and land use and facilities. So some of the short-term strategies include having an ETC at each agency, as well as looking into having bike share and car sharing programs on the installation. It is the Executive Director's recommendation that the commission notes that the transportation management plan proposes a long-term parking ratio of 1 to 1.37 and requests that the Army continue to evaluate strategies and opportunities to reach the 1 to 1.5 parking ratio goal outlined in the comprehensive plan. NCPC staff commends the Army for capping employee parking at 60% for new administration buildings and for committing to reducing parking through identification of parking areas as redevelopment parcels. In order for the Army to reach the comprehensive plan's parking ratio, the Army would need to reduce the amount of parking proposed by 3,600 parking spaces. Given that the Army is proposing a reduction in SOV usage from 81 to 60% in the next 17 years, additional reduction in SOV usage to meet the parking ratio goal may be difficult. However, request that the Army evaluate what it would take to reach the 1 to 1.5 and if it is achievable or not. It is the Executive Director's recommendation that the commission requests that the Army evaluate the following within the TMP. First, a mechanism for monitoring individual agency TMPs. As I stated, the Fort Belvoir TMP is an umbrella document that sets goals and objectives for installation while the agency-level TMPs focus on site-specific strategies. And therefore, the Army is requiring that individual agencies have a TMP. NCPC supports the direction the Army is taking. However, additional monitoring and evaluation within the agency installation-wide TMP is needed to ensure that the agency-level TMPs are enforced and are updated as needed. Second, strategies that target non-employees to the installation. The comprehensive plan as well as the Army's own parking policies pertain to employees. However, visitors to Fort Belvoir impact the transportation network as well as volumes at the gate. The Army should start to analyze strategies that reduce SOV usage of visitors onto the installation. Lastly, district-level parking ratios. Given that Fort Belvoir is a large installation and has different characteristics and transportation options based on what location you are on the installation, staff encourages the Army to evaluate parking ratios based on districts that has previously identified in the IPS. One possible location to target a reduction in parking is in the south post districts. The Army is proposing to reduce parking within the south post from 93% to 86% by 2030. Given the proposed redevelopment in the south post area and that south post is one of the more denser areas on the installation, we recommend that the Army reevaluate the amount of proposed parking. The Army is conducting an environmental impact statement to analyze the potential impacts of the master plan. I'll note that the master plan itself does not identify specific projects, only developable parcels, and propose timeline for developing those parcels. This allows flexibility to the Army if something unexpected comes to Fort Belvoir, such as another BRAC, or if an agency gets funding for an expansion or building that was not previously thought to occur. However, the draft EIS does identify short-term and long-term projects to the best of the Army's ability to anticipate what projects could occur. The Army's preferred alternative includes 52 short-term projects and 19 long-term projects. A full list of those projects are located within your Appendix A of the EDR. The short-term projects range from FY 2012 to FY 2017. Due to the length of drafting the master plan, some of the short-term projects have been previously reviewed by the commission. In total, the short-term projects will amount to approximately 3.5 million square feet of new building stock and approximately 5,000 new employees to the installation. The long-term projects range from FY 2018 to FY 2030 and include 19 projects. In total, the long-term projects will amount to approximately 2.5 million square feet of new building and approximately 12,000 personnel for a total of 17,000 employee increase at Fort Belvoir by 2030. In addition to the projects outlined, the draft EIS also includes measures to mitigate development and growth at Fort Belvoir. The full list of mitigation measures is located in Appendix B of the EDR and includes stream restoration and adding land to the forest and wildlife corridor in the Aquitink Wildlife Village. This slide shows proposed long-term and short-term improvements to the Army is proposing as mitigation. So in the short term, the Army is proposing one intersection improvement as well as an improvement to John J. Kingman Road and a new access control point which the commission has previously approved, as well as two new transit centers. In the long term, the Army is proposing multiple intersection improvements along Fairfax County Parkway, including a great separated intersection with John J. Kingman Road and the Parkway, as well as intersection improvements along Route One. It also includes some of those internal roadway circulation improvements that you saw earlier as part of the roadway circulation plan. Staff requests that these mitigation measures be included in the record of decision at the conclusion of the EIS in order to support the projects as the Army tries to get funding in the future. In addition, request that post-mitigation monitoring be added to the TMP's monitoring and evaluation section to gauge mitigation effectiveness of the proposed transportation measures. If the measures are found not to be effective, the Army should reevaluate additional transportation measures. This evaluation should be done in collaboration with Fairfax County. As part of the NCPC's referral process, the National Park Service provided comments on the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail and its relationship with Fort Belvoir. The Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail is a national scenic trail overseen by the National Park Service. The trail is approximately, will be approximately 830 miles of, currently some is existing as well as some are planned, and they run from Point Lookout, Maryland and Smith Point, Virginia, along the Potomac River up to Washington DC and beyond till Pennsylvania. It is the Executive Director's recommendation that the commission notes that during the review of the Potomac Heritage Trail feasibility study, the commission noted its support for the development of the trail and its commitment to ensure that the Potomac Heritage Trail would be included in the master plans for Fort Belvoir and Marine Corps Base Quantico, considering both locations are along the Potomac River. It should also be noted that the draft master plan does not include an alignment of the Potomac Heritage Trail. This was done in agreement with NCPC and the National Park Service staff. Due to security concerns, the Army was originally showing the Potomac Heritage Trail along US Route One outside the perimeter fence of Fort Belvoir. NPS expressed concern that US Route One did not create an experience commensurate with that of a national scenic trail, and the Army removed the alignment from the maps to allow for further planning analysis. The Army, NPS, NCPC, along with the Northern Virginia Regional Commission are in the process of executing a memorandum of understanding to facilitate that planning analysis. While a trail alignment is not shown in the draft master plan, the Army has included language regarding the trail, and NPS has provided proposed language modifications, which is also in the appendix. The Army should continue to work with NPS and NCPC on the final description of the trail within the master planning documents. In addition to the comments raised by NPS, comments were also received from Fairfax County and are also included in your appendix of the EDR. The county has signed up to speak today, so I'll quickly highlight some points they made in the comment letter and let them provide testimony regarding their review of the master plan. In the comment letter, the county noted that it was highly appreciative of all the coordination that has occurred and of the strong environmental focus of the documents. Fort Belvoir raised a concern regarding transportation impacts. The county noted that no post-mitigation analysis was proposed to analyze the effectiveness of the mitigation measures. In addition, the county raised multiple questions regarding the assumptions of the traffic analysis and noted that it is unknown if the goals of the TMP to reduce SOV usage are attainable. In regard to the county's environmental quality corridors, the county noted that it is the Army's policy to establish a 35-foot wide protective area along each side of a stream. The county noted that at a minimum, the buffer should be 50 feet on each side of the stream. And while the Army is not required to follow the county's EQC quality, we encourage the Army to evaluate adopting a 50-foot buffer. In regards to tree replacement, the county commended the Army for having a tree replacement policy at Fort Belvoir. However, the county recommended that the Army evaluate a tree replacement policy that consider removal of tree canopy rather than the number of trees. At the Davison Army Airfield, the Army is proposing development parcels west of the existing buildings. You can see on the screen the regulating plan for the Davison Army Airfield. And staff recommends that the Army work with Fairfax County regarding possible expansion of the buffer between the airfield and the surrounding community and a potential joint land use study that evaluates options at the airfield to reduce noise impacts and evaluates heights and land use around the airfield. In terms of stormwater management, the county expressed appreciation for the Army's commitment to use site design for stormwater management on project sites. The county recommended that in center medians should be, center medians within roadway construction should incorporate infiltration of stormwater from adjacent impervious areas. NCPC staff generally supports Fairfax County's comments and recommends that the Army evaluate changes to the master plan to address the comments. We recommend that the Army meet with Fairfax County and NCPC to discuss potential changes prior to the master plan being submitted for review. You can get excited now because I am finished with the presentation. But I'm happy to answer any questions. As you can see, it is a very thick document and I was only able to summarize, but I'm available to answer questions as well as Chris Langraff from the Army is here. And as I stated before, the Fairfax County is here as well.
Terrific. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I will note that we have Ms. Kimberly Rybold from Fairfax Department of Planning and Zoning. Ms. Rybold? We welcome you. You have five minutes.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Kimberly Rybold with the Fairfax County Department of Planning and Zoning. I am joined today by Noel Kaplan, who is an environmental planner with DPZ, and as well, I'm joined by Tom Burke, who is with our Department of Transportation. Over the past few years, Fort Belvoir planners have coordinated with county staff as the draft master plan documents have been developed. We have had the opportunity to review the document drafts throughout this process and provide comments to the Fort Belvoir planners. The staff and consultants have worked very hard to review all of our comments and provide us with responses to each one. We appreciate that the master plan drafts have evolved to incorporate many of these comments throughout the process. As noted in our comments that we submitted to NCPC staff on this draft, we hope that this level of coordination will continue into the future as many of the projects that are shown in the master plan are constructed. Fairfax County is supportive of Fort Belvoir's efforts to update its master plan as this will allow for the proposed development on the installation to be analyzed within the context of a guiding framework for the future. The existing master plan does not adequately reflect the present nature of Fort Belvoir, and that has made it difficult for us to evaluate new projects such as those that have resulted from BRAC and projects that have occurred since. An updated master plan also improves our ability to project future employment in this part of the county, improving the quality of our growth forecasts at both the local and regional levels. In particular, we appreciate many of the master plan's guiding principles, including the emphasis on building form and location, multimodal transportation, and compact redevelopment strategies. As we've noted in our comments, we wish to highlight the strong environmental stewardship ethic that is evident throughout the master plan documents. The concept of environmental stewardship is prominent within the Garrison Mission Statement, and Fort Belvoir's stewardship efforts extend well beyond the regulatory mandates. Within this supportive context, our comments on the master plan and its associated draft EIS relating to environmental issues include recommendations to better align Fort Belvoir's identification of environmental site constraints and considerations with the county's environmental definitions and policies, a recommendation for expansion of identified environmental protection efforts in the Fort Belvoir North area to include buffer areas along all streams, and the need for better justification to support the conclusion in the draft EIS that a carbon monoxide hotspot analysis for the master plan is not needed. Additionally, county transportation staff is concerned that the level of transportation analysis that has been provided as a part of the draft EIS and TMP in support of the master plan update is not sufficient to properly evaluate potential adverse transportation impacts anticipated from the significant future growth that is proposed on the main post and the north area. Chief among these concerns is the lack of documentation of mitigation strategies, particularly how they were derived and to what level they address future deficiencies identified within the transportation network. The long-term 2030 analysis should be conducted at the intersection level to help identify appropriate mitigation measures, and a post-mitigation analysis should be provided to gauge how well the mitigation measures address congestion. The draft EIS should also convey more of a commitment to work with Fairfax County and the Virginia Department of Transportation to implement necessary transportation mitigation measures to help facilitate the planned growth on post. In conclusion, we wish to reiterate our support for the update of the real property master plan with considerations that have been noted in our written comments to the NCPC staff. We hope that the collaboration we have developed with Fort Belvoir throughout this process continues into the future. In particular, we'd like to thank Chris Langraff for helping us establish this coordination as we begin the review of these documents and for being so responsive to all of our questions and comments. As Cheryl mentioned, Noel, Tom, and I are available to answer any questions you might have on our comments. Thank you.
I have one question regarding transportation.
Sure.
Are VDOT and the county generally on the same page in terms of transportation concerns or issues?
I'll turn that one over to Tom.
Mr. Burke? And particularly around Route One and Lorton Road, that intersection.
To tell you the truth, I haven't seen VDOT's comments, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
So if I may generalize the VDOT comments, they're mostly questions about the assumptions and modeling.
Yeah.
They didn't raise any concerns about impacts to intersections. They're currently undergoing a plan looking at the Route One corridor from Huntington Metro Station through Fort Belvoir and beyond. VDOT in collaboration with Fort Belvoir.
Okay. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, the 2,100 new housing units, want to make sure I understood what was written. There are two neighborhoods that are being redeveloped. There are two neighborhoods that are being redeveloped. Cause of that redevelopment, there will be 2,100 new housing units to be located around the town centers?
No, the current number... The number of housing units is to remain steady on Fort Belvoir.
Okay.
But two neighborhoods are being redeveloped to allow for handicapped accessible housing as well as upgrading them to current standards. And there'll be a loss of about 223 units as due to that construction, and so that will be relocated. Those units will...
These are replacement units?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then the last question I have regarding stream restoration, mentioned 17-degraded streams. Terms of magnitude is about how many linear feet of that? Chris, do you know? I was trying to get a sense of scale about the stream restoration effort.
I don't actually have all 17 quantified. I know that they do vary. We actually have the Corps of Engineers coming out to look at the... At six of them that were some of our top priorities, and those six range from... One is as short as about 300 feet, and the other is as long as about 1,500 feet of total impact for the stream restoration. In the past, in BRAC-associated products... Projects, we did one stream restoration that was about 500 feet on one side of the hospital and on the other side of the hospital, about 1,800 feet. So all of our streams have that... About that range of about 300 to 1,800 feet.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Is there a motion on the EDR? Is there a motion on the...
Senator has been moved and seconded.
Ms. White and Mr. Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Thank you. And thanks to everyone. This has been a long project, a big project. As mentioned, we will go... We will take Agenda Item 5D up first and then go to 5C. So Agenda Item Number 5D is the first-stage PUD and related map amendment of certain squares. Mr. Wile?
Thank you.
Also note, we have six people signed up to speak on this.
The Zoning Commission for the District of Columbia has taken a proposed action to approve zoning case 14-02, which is a first-stage planned unit development submission and related amendment to the DC zoning map. Approval of the first-stage PUD will allow the development team to begin more detailed planning and design and to proceed through the US Department of Housing and Urban Development funding and disposition processes. The development was referred to NCPC for review and comment in October, and the Zoning Commission is currently scheduled to take a final action on the first-stage PUD on November 24, 2014. So here's an existing air photo that shows the proposed redevelopment site. As you can see, it's along the north side of St. Elizabeth's to the east of the northern portion of JABAB or Joint Base Anacostia-Bolling and to the south of Anacostia Park. The site for the PUD consists of the Berry Farm Development with 432 low-income rowhouse units, the Wade Apartments with 12 low-income units, both of which are owned and managed by the DC Housing Authority, and seven district-owned vacant lots. The redevelopment site is approximately 25 acres in area and bound by First Sterling Avenue along the northwest, Sutland Parkway on the northeast, Wade Road on the southeast, and St. Elizabeth's West Campus to the southwest. There's a little history. The site was initially part of a farm owned by James Berry in the 19th century and then purchased in 1867 by a federal government agency known as the Freedmen's Bureau, which parceled out the property to recently emancipated African-Americans during the Reconstruction Era. In 1954, the Redevelopment Land Agency, on behalf of the district government, purchased the property to the west of Wade Road Southeast, allowing the district government to build the public housing community that is today known as Berry Farm. The first-stage PUD proposal under consideration will set the overall parameters for redevelopment of the Berry Farm property, including site layout, character, building massing and density, and general mix of uses. To accommodate the proposed project, the redevelopment team would like to amend the existing zoning from R5A throughout the entire site to R5B and C2A districts as shown on the slide. And this would increase the maximum allowable height from 40 feet today to 60 feet under the new R5B PUD zoning and 65 feet under the new C2A standard. So the submitted development plans show approximately 1,400 residential units and a mix of rowhouses, flats, multifamily, and live-work units, with a one-to-one replacement for the existing low-income units, with 342 units onsite and 100 units offsite. Plans show approximately 55,000 square feet for retail and service uses, a roughly two-acre central park, 1,067 off-street parking spaces, and additional on-street parking throughout the site, as well as a new roadway network, sidewalks, green space, and utility upgrades. And here's the existing site. As you can see, a majority of the site will be... Is scheduled to be made up of flats and rowhouses. Each of these slides will have kind of example photos that give you an idea of what these various building typologies could appear like. There will be higher-density multifamily development along First Sterling Avenue and along Sumner Road. There will be several live-work units with ground-floor retail and residential above. And this shows the location of the central park area in the heart of the community. So NCPC staff reviewed the proposed development for federal interest issues using the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol, using the St. Elizabeth's Master Plan with a focus on the campus's historic views, and for consistency with plans from a recent 2012 commission action related to a renovation of the Berry Farm Recreation Center. Starting with NCPC comp plan, staff finds that the development proposal is consistent with a number of federal workplace and transportation element policies that relate to provision of housing and retail services in close proximity to federal installations. And this is to encourage local-level economic development and sustainable travel through walking, biking, and transit. The slides before you list some of these federal policies and also visually illustrate the Berry Farm site's close proximity to nearby federal campuses, the Anacostia Metro Rail Station, and future DC Streetcar Line. The new development with its large mix of residential units at various price points will provide an opportunity for local employees and residents to live near their jobs, reducing regional travel, and contributing to the local district economy. With regards to the St. Elizabeth's Master Plan, which was adopted by NCPC in December 2008, NCPC staff undertook a technical view impact analysis from the Sanes Campus to various sites within downtown Washington DC, including the US Capitol Building, Washington Monument, and Lincoln Memorial. And staff determined that these views would not be impacted from the proposed Berry Farm development due to the campus's relatively high elevation, the immediate sharp drop in elevation, and the proposed new building heights. In addition, the Commission will also have another opportunity to review the proposed development at the time of the zoning commission's second-stage referrals to ensure that the proposed plans continue to preserve the significant view sheds from St. Elizabeth's. And lastly, staff reviewed the proposed development's layout against the previous commission action for the Berry Farm Recreation Center renovation, and we were able to confirm the master plan's consistency with a 1967 transfer of jurisdiction from the National Parks Service to the district for recreational purposes only. And you can see that plat in the lower right-hand corner. And then you can see the proposed land use development in the lower right-hand corner as well. And you can see... You can compare the panhandle portion of that along with the panhandle portion from an earlier 2006 concept plan. So with that, it is the Executive Director's recommendation to find the first-stage planned unit development and a related map amendment for various lots in squares 5862, 5865, 5866, and 5867 is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
I know it's up. I can't see much. Mr. Chairman, I know it's our practice to listen to our witnesses first, which I would like to comply with, but I want to make a mention... Add to your comments that the land that was sold on this property many years ago was the money used to build the Howard University. A lot of folks are not aware of that. But this money, this land, sailed to free slaves and independent folks, free enslaved people, was used to build Howard University campus. That, I think, is a very significant fact to be in our record. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Let's move straight to public comment. We have six speakers. The first is William Merrifield. And the... Mr. Merrifield will be followed by Skylar Pondexter-Moore, and then third will be Mr. Brett Williams. Mr. Merrifield, welcome.
Thank you.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Will Merrifield, and I'm a staff attorney with the Affordable Housing Initiative at the Washington Legal Clinic for the Homeless. I am here to testify in support of the Berry Farm Tenants and Allies Association. I wanted to testify today and focus my testimony to address the affordable housing aspect of the proposed demolition and redevelopment of Berry Farms. First, let me say there is a substantial federal interest in the proposed Berry Farm redevelopment. The proposed plan was financed by the federal government through a Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant, involves public housing, is dependent on additional federal funds in order to make happen, and in my opinion, will inevitably result in the displacement of a largely African-American population. To understand the urgency of this issue, one has to understand the context of the affordable housing crisis in DC. Currently in the district, a person making minimum wage must work approximately 137 hours per week, 52 weeks a year, or earn $28.25 an hour at 40 hours per week to afford a two-bedroom apartment at market rate. The reality of this housing market is that if you are a senior citizen on a fixed income, a person with a disability, or a minimum or medium-wage worker, you cannot live in DC without some sort of housing subsidy. In other words, there needs to be a way to fill the gap for these individuals between what is reasonable to spend on housing and the market rent. The most effective way to fill this gap is through long-term subsidies. Unfortunately, DCHA subsidized housing waitlist is currently closed and numbers approximately 70,000 households. The consequence of the lack of long-term subsidized housing is the explosion in homelessness that the district is dealing with today. Because this affordability crisis is so dire, we have to ensure that every dollar we are putting towards affordable housing is spent efficiently and purposefully to produce long-term, deeply affordable units. After reading the Berry Farm PUD, I have serious concerns about the affordable housing component of this plan. I was shocked by the lack of specificity with regard to how the housing units that the applicant is proposing to be demolished will be replaced. While the PUD references one-for-one replacement, it does not define what that means. For example, it is not clear whether the project will replace each public housing unit with another unit of the same bedroom size. Additionally, the PUD provides no real details about how replacement units will be financed. It seems that the applicants are counting on receiving federal money through a Choice Neighborhood program as a precondition to be able to fund replacement units. However, DCHA has not been awarded this money and does not know whether they will be awarded these funds. Lastly, there is no mention of the right-to-return criteria for existing Berry Farm residents. I fail to see how there could have been meaningful resident engagement in this process if the applicant does not have financing for replacement units or a right-to-return policy in place before demolition. The rush to have this PUD approved before these questions are answered makes me very skeptical that this project will be any different than other failed new community projects in DC. And when I say that new community projects are failed in DC, I will refer you to two articles that I submitted for the record, one of which contains a report that was commissioned by the city to assess new communities, and the report assessed it as not being able to produce the units it says it'll produce. An example of this is the Northwest One New Communities Master Plan that was improved in 2006, and the date has only produced 30 of the 280 needed replacement units. One of the Northwest One projects subsidized by the city through new communities is 2M Street. DC subsidized the developer of 2M Street $16.8 million to create a building that was supposed to be two-thirds affordable and provide replacement units for displaced Temple Courts residents. Instead, the development is less than a third affordable and proposes 59 replacement units. The developer blamed the bad economy and the inability to find financing for his failure to deliver the promised affordable units. However, although not able to finance the affordable units, the developer was able to find financing for an indoor basketball court and a rooftop pool for the building, amenities that will allow him to demand high-market rents in the rapidly gentrified Noma neighborhoods. This example is illustrative of the danger of relying on public-private partnerships to create affordability and shows why traditional public housing is still important. The district should not be subsidizing developers to build luxury apartments. And I see my time is up. The district should not be subsidizing developers to build luxury apartments under the guise of affordable housing. Also, moving forward, developers need to be held accountable and forced to repay subsidies if they fail to deliver on the appropriate levels of affordability that they promised. Without knowing... Back to this project. Without knowing the exact nature of the one-for-one replacement, a detailed plan for how those replacement units will be financed, and the criteria for residents to be able to return, it would be irresponsible for this plan to be approved. Further, I would argue that even if there was a one-for-one replacement of every single Berry Farm resident, which the PUD calls for... There won't be a one-for-one replacement because the PUD calls for 100 less units than there are right now onsite. The proposed plan would still displace residents for years and bring them back to a community completely unrecognizable. In closing, new communities has not worked in the past, and there is no evidence that this project will be different than the others. The end result will be displacement of current residents. For these reasons, it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for National Capitol and should not be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Merrifield.
Thanks, and I welcome questions.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Pondexter-Moore, followed by Brett Williams, and then Chris Otten. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Chair. My name is Skylar Pondexter-Moore, and I am the organizer for the Public Housing Campaign at Empower DC. I'm a member of Berry Farms Tenants and Allies Association, and I am also a public housing resident living in Washington DC in Ward 8. I am testifying to focus on the displacement of hundreds of families that will result from the current demolition and redevelopment plans DCHA and our development and POA have brought before you for approval. No federally funded program is supposed to be used for discriminatory purposes or result in dislocation, displacement. However, these very plans will most certainly force many adults, seniors, and children to be forced to move away from their community with no guarantee to return. This is the definition of displacement. We have an unsurmountable amount of evidence that shows HOPE 6, which DCHA constantly references in the PUD as a success. New communities does just that, displaces. It displaces people. Specifically, it displaces low-income African-Americans. No other demographic is being negatively impacted by these plans. It's only African-Americans. There are many families right now living in Berry Farms that were displaced from other public housing properties that were demolished under the federally funded HOPE 6 program. Now they face being displaced yet again under federally funded Choice Neighborhoods and locally funded New Communities Initiative. This is problematic. We should learn from our mistakes from the past, not continue to approve and make the exact same detrimental mistake over and over again. I believe some may call this insanity. I believe some may call this insanity. We are here to ask you to reject the current plans before you until there is an anti-displacement plan to redevelop in place, which was specified in the original 2006 Berry Farms Small Area Plan. Until this is put into place, I ask you to reject these current plans. Residents should not be forced to move away from the 25-acre Berry Farms site. 25 acres is vast enough to demolish and redevelop in phases to prevent displacement. Necessary precautions, safeguards, and provisions can be put into place to assure safety. There is currently a wreck that was demolished and built right on-site while Berry Farms residents lived there. Public housing communities have been through this repeatedly. Emptying entire properties by forcing African-American families to relocate over and over again is discriminatory and must stop now. Who would be against that? Why do the applicants wish to move every single family from the property to who knows where without even being willing to negotiate allowing families to remain in place? Shouldn't the priority be to prevent displacement? Then why is there no anti-displacement plan in place? Displacement is essentially being approved and funded by our federal and local tax dollars. Furthermore, there is an immense amount of evidence that shows the often-promised one-for-one replacement of public housing units never materialized as they are initially promised. Every single public housing property in DC that has been demolished in the name of redevelopment has not been provided with the same amount of public housing units as was there before or under the same guidelines and qualifications. The market units always seem to be built, be built first, and then on the back end, there's always the, "We ran into funding issues and are working on the replacement units." How many times does this have to happen before some jurisdiction steps in and puts an end to this? And again, this is only affecting, negatively affecting African-American families, and only multifamily properties are targeted, properties with large bedrooms that accommodate large families in need. This is discriminatory. NCPC, I ask again you to not approve these plans until it is stipulated that demolition is done in phases to allow residents to stay on-site. Public housing units should be built first to assure the existing residents are benefited first. No new reentry criteria should be established for existing and future public housing residents. These reentry criterias, like credit checks, et cetera, limit the amount of people in need that can qualify for the new public housing units, thus creating more and more homelessness. This is evident in the skyrocket of the DCHA waiting list for housing, which was 25,000 in 2000 and is now over 70,000. Also, it's evident in the soar in homeless numbers in DC in the past 10 years in conjunction with the demolition of eight public housing properties in the last 10 years. So I ask you again to please reject this until an anti-displacement plan is put into place. Thank you.
Oh, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Williams? Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, Brett Williams. Welcome.
Hello. I'm an anthropologist, and over the last 15 years, I've worked in neighborhoods along the Anacostia River. Since the National Park Service hired me to work alongside community researchers exploring the ways people are connected to Anacostia Park, I've learned over these years how important the river and the park are to people who are poor. They go there to fish to supplement their groceries, they gather for family reunions, or they go to the park seeking peace. Berry Farm residents lost easy access to the waterfront after federal highways skewered their community, but many are still very attached to the place where they live. They take pride in their identity and community. Great musical traditions, for example, have come from Berry Farm. The social networks that are built by people who are poor run broad and deep. People help each other out with childcare, they share fish and garden provisions, they help each other get to clinics, dialysis, and other appointments, they check to make sure elderly people survive the night, they help each other meet health emergencies, they share information on job prospects, they share telephones and rides that give shelter to people in distress. I also worked as the HUD monitor for the Ellen Wilson Project, DC's first HOPE Six project, where only one resident was able to return. And over the years, I have interviewed many public housing residents experiencing displacement. I have learned that efforts to deconcentrate the poor are seriously flawed. Neighborhoods do not cause poverty, and people do not catch poverty from each other. All dispersal does is shatter social networks and isolate people in strange surroundings where they may be stigmatized and even criminalized. They do no better economically or educationally, and their health deteriorates. Research shows troubling spikes in asthma, stress, hypertension, and depression. Even if they are eventually allowed to return, there is no evidence that mixed-income housing works as planners claim, that it provides role models or connects people to opportunities. Why not develop in place? NEPA requires that care must be taken not to destroy the human environment, and it seems to me that dislocation does just that. Berry Farms is in a fragile ecosystem resting at the bottom of an overdeveloped watershed. Massive redevelopment is bad for the river and the wetlands as well as the people. Massive redevelopment is not sensible in the face of climate change. I hope that you will consider calling on your authority under NEPA to make a historic decision to stop the destruction of a living community with a proud legacy of housing the poor. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Otten, followed by Detrice Belt.
I just want to make sure, is Mr. Aristotle Terezé also on that list?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, NCPC. My name is Chris Otten, 15-year, 15-year resident here in the District of Columbia. I'm with DC for Reasonable Development, Citywide Coalition, looking at planning in the District of Columbia, particularly bad planning. This project represents what we would call a poorly planned project. Let me just start with, on the zoning record right now, there are no human or social impact studies or statements about how a project like this and the displacement it represents will affect the people living there right now and their social networks. There's also no analysis of how breaking up those social networks will affect the 400 families as they go into the future. There's no analysis of the privatization of 35 acres of public land. This is our federally funded public land right now. This project represents privatization of all of it. What does that do to our constitutional rights on that public land? Where's the study of that? We do not find it on the record. This must be considered a loss to our federal interest, especially one with such land-use contexts right now, serving the most vulnerable DC residents. Do not the federal interests include protecting the future of people living in the federal city? The track record of these types of dispersal projects is not very good. As, as already been pointed out, there have been several of these types of public housing redevelopment projects where a fraction of the people who live there currently come back to those, to the redeveloped housing units. And to that end, right now, the redevelopment of the land, we have one, right now, 400 families living in many-unit bedroom sizes, three to four to five to six-bedroom unit sizes. The replacement redevelopment plan calls for one-studio and two-bedroom unit sizes. So right away, you're, you're, and most of those new ones will be majority market rate. So we have, right now, many units of truly affordable housing at a variety of sizes that promotes families to a project that's proposing to build a majority market rate scheme that serves one-studio, one- and two-bedroom-sized families, which is not very big. And so it's clear that this will lead to displacement of the people living in and out with large families. Also, what's very disconcerting about the plans before you is that the redevelopment and phasing plan, in other words, how the people who live there now will see their future unfold, is not on the record. And in fact, the zoning commission has said to the applicant that they could present that phasing plan when they come back for the second stage of this project, which is in three years from now. However, also on the record is the DC Housing Authority's testimony stating that they've already filed for permits to demolish Berry Farm. So if they're going to demolish Berry Farm without a phasing plan in place, you can see how the futures of these people who live in this federal city on this very important historic federal property, given the history of DC, is so uncertain as to seriously challenge federal regulations. I started, I've mentioned the Constitution and our First Amendment rights, but how about the Fair Housing Act? How about the Federal Human Rights Act? This is a serious issue. As Commissioners, you're not here to just look at, "Oh, this is pretty, look how nice it is, look how, the colors of the bricks are great, and, you know, look at all the trees." No, this is about people's lives and the future of their families. And right now, this plan does not meet, it will challenge the federal interest. We would ask you that you not approve it until the people have been conferred with, who live there right now, and a phasing plan is set up where they can stay on-site while the redevelopment of this site happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Belt.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Detrice Belt, and I'm the chair of the Berry Farms Tenants and Allies Association. And I'm a resident of Berry Farms. I live there with my daughter, she's six years old, and we've been there in our unit for two years, and my mother lives directly across the street from us. So this is, this is really serious, but it's just short for me, for the Commissioners and the council. We do not want to be displaced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker is Mr. Aristotle Terezé.
My name is Aristotle Terezé, and I am the attorney for the Berry Farm Tenants and Allies Association. I'm here to request NCPC require applicants provide an environmental impact statement, which includes the effects this project will have on displaced residents. Under the National Environmental Protection Act, this body has authority to require an environmental impact statement when changes to the physical and natural environment have a significant impact. If these land use changes are interrelated with changes to the human environment, then the environmental impact statement must consider social, cultural, and economic impacts, as well as changes to the human relationship to the physical environment. Changes can also be defined as growth-induced changes, changes in patterns of land use, or changes that includes increases in density. One of the purposes of NEPA is to provide for the broadest uses of land while protecting from unintended consequences. Guidance from the EPA states that impacts can be direct or indirect and can be acute or cumulative if they are foreseeable. HUD has provided guidance on the NEPA's application to the demolition, demolition of public housing. There's also case law which applies NEPA to proposed housing projects' effects on the human environment. In the present case, applicants propose a very large project with over 1,400 units being introduced to the physical environment after the raising of over 400 family units. This will increase the density and induce changes in growth. The intent is to allow current residents to return, but given the history of new communities and HOPE Six, as it is enacted in DC, it is very foreseeable that many residents will never return. This is compounded by applicants requesting a longer-than-usual Phase One, as well as the project's financial uncertainty, which only increases the likelihood of non-return. Non-return would significantly alter the residents' relationship to the physical environment. It also affects residents' social, economic, and cultural well-being. For the foregoing reasons, the FTA requests that at the soonest point possible, NCPC require an environmental impact statement with a meaningful, detailed, and in-depth section covering the social, economic, and the cultural impact of both temporary and permanent displacement for Berry Farm residents. Moreover, if it is found that significant adverse impacts of the project cannot be mitigated, then under NEPA, the project should be rejected. And I, I, okay, I'm out of time, but, thank you. Okay. Well, I just want to say that this project is getting worse. It's happened over time where they've displaced residents, and each time, they get the option of a 42-month voucher or replacement public housing. Well, every time you close a public housing project, there are less public housing for people to go to. So this isn't getting better, it's getting worse. And, yeah, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing, and we'll return the discussion to the Commission. Are there any questions or comments? Again, being mindful that the proposed action is simply to approve comments, and the comments are that, simply put, the PUD is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for the national capital. With that, are there comments or questions? Mr. Wells?
Let me ask, I mean, that's, I appreciate that. There, there is obviously, the, the concerns have been brought up in terms of displacement and, but what role and to what degree has NCPC been able to weigh in on something like the displacement of residents in a development?
In my tenure historically, I don't know that we have weighed in on that, but I would turn to legal counsel, Mr. Costa.
Yeah, to my recollection, we have not weighed in on this type of issue, especially with zoning comments, back to the zoning commission.
Mr. Wells, I'd ask, this has gone through city council and...
Right.
For quite some time.
I was looking at the role of NCPC, and this is, it's a forum that these residents have chosen to, to appeal to, and I just wanted to get clarification, really for them as well, of what can be expected in terms of comments from NCPC and what's the role of NCPC. I don't want people to think that these comments have been ignored, but more in terms of what is the jurisdictional venue of, of being able to address these comments. And you're exactly right, whether it be city council or other, those have certainly been the very appropriate venues. But just to clarify, that NCPC, and the answer has been that NCPC has not historically ever weighed in on the social issue of displacement in, in a neighborhood.
I have a question. Well, so, I, but who, who, which body would be responsible for NEPA in this transaction? Because I think it's made a very compelling case that, 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 an environmental assessment would include impact of this nature. So who's, who's the, or which body would be responsible for NEPA?
It would not be this body. This body is offering advisory comments only.
I understand, but I know it's not us, but who...
I don't know if HUD is selling the land. The district has its own, well, its own environmental law, whether or not they need to comply with that in zoning, you'd have to speak with their legal representatives.
There's, there's no federal undertaking involved here, so NEPA would not apply.
Mr. Chairman, I technically, technically am a resident of Berry Farms, because the house I live in is in the old Berry Farms area, though I'm not in the public housing part. So, and I've, as you all probably know, for most of my life have lived in Anacostia, and I have played and been chased away from the streets of Berry Farms many times as a young person, going to Bernie Elementary School and living on those streets. I am very pleased to see faces that are here now making their case for the community. It is very good. I hope you will stay engaged for indefinitely in helping our community, not only Berry Farms, but other parts of our community transition and become stronger. I know that, I can, I think I can speak for this entire body, we're all sensitive and concerned about what you raise, displacement. It is not a local phenomenon, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a global phenomena of development and et cetera. I also know that, having watched that housing area with friends of mine living in those buildings and I'm playing in those buildings and those homes, has gone through renovation after renovation after renovation after renovation. And the people who live there deserve to have good housing, modern housing, new housing. How we reach that is complicated. I know a little more about what's happening there and has been expressed today by anybody, because I've been watching it, and we've had people come before the Anacostia Coordinating Council to present these facts to us. I think there is a little distortion in what is trying to be accomplished and what tools are being used to reach those goals. I have some confidence, and I have some... I have some confidence, and I have some, I won't say prayers, I have some hopes, that the people who are concerned and have the responsibility within the district government, the council, et cetera, et cetera, and the mayor's office, et cetera, will be forthright, transparent, and committed to making sure that this displacement does not occur. But something's got to be done with those old buildings that are there, and we've got to find a way to make it happen. I have been told and have presented plans that are very, very suggestive of some concern and some workable approaches. I also know, and having watched other projects like this, the community, like today, have to stay engaged. And if they stay engaged, I believe they will find the results will certainly be better than they could be if they were not. And that's very, very important. Engaged from now through the entire project. Also, residents who do move to different locations have got to, in a temporary manner maybe, have got to be committed to come back. Sometimes they move and they're happy where they are. Sometimes they're moved and they get lost. Some of these activists who are here today trying to help at this point need to hopefully stay engaged to keep these, this network of, social network, this, this, this community connected so that during this break, there will be constant nurturing of those relationships. It can be done, and I think there's a desire to do that. So I, I know that we've been kind of dancing around, the point is, NCPC is not the place to get this resolved, but it's a good place for you to be to present your case, and we hear you. And there are people here who have authority and roles that maybe you'll find can play on this and be a part of this, but this body is not the one that can make these decisions for you or help you in this case. We're advisory, we have a limited role that we have to play, we're sensitive, we're concerned, we hear you, but that may be the extent. And there are those of us, including myself and others sitting on this panel, who will be, as I have been all my life, others who dropped in for the, for the moment, engaged in trying to make sure this community is protected and is at least maintained as best possible in the housing and in the community that they're a part of now.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Ms. McCarthy?
Um, I, I totally agree with Mr. Dixon that this is, our role is simply to determine if there's a federal interest involved. I would like to just say, for purposes of some of the concerns that were raised, which are very important and valuable concerns, that the question of whether or not the one-for-one replacement of units will take place is guaranteed by the fact that there will be a planned unit development order issued as a result of this PUD. And when the developers go to the zoning administrator for, with their building permit application, the zoning administrator will check to see whether that building permit application is consistent with the terms of the planned unit development order. The example of the initial new communities project that was raised and the reduction in affordable units was, did, is the case, but unfortunately, that was not done through a planned unit development. So there was no, there had been a plan done, an aspirational plan, but there was not, it was not a planned unit development, so it wasn't enforceable through the building permit process. The Arthur Kapper Carlsberg project, which was a HOPE 6, which did go before the zoning commission as a planned unit development, does have an order which has specified how many units have to be constructed at various levels of affordability, and that is, while it's certainly taken longer than people would have wanted due to the recession in 2008, that those same provisions are required to be complied with. The second thing I would say about replacement and the displacement of people while the project is being done, certainly when we, when I was at the office of planning the first time and we articulated the plans and the goals for new communities, we had placed great importance on the notion of build first. And in that instance, if the new community at Northwest 1, there was sufficient land, vacant land available across the street that was controlled by the National Capitol Revitalization Corporation, and the idea was build there first. Those residents that had to be relocated could simply be relocated across the street and would have the option of returning later. Unfortunately, due to whatever internal processes, the National Capitol Revitalization Corporation didn't turn that land over in time. The recession hit, the funding disappeared, and, and as I said, there was no PUD to guarantee that that was the case. But in the case of Berry Farm and in the case of some of the other new communities projects, Mr. Malloy's suggestion that it should simply be rebuilt on-site might be workable if there were sufficient vacant units in other, within the project for the people in the first project to be rebuilt, to be moved into. But as one of our other testifiers noted, we have an incredibly long, just deplorably long waiting list to get into public housing. So when there are vacant units, the department, the housing authority attempted to fill those as quickly as possible. There is no gigantic supply of vacant units there waiting on-site for people to be moved into. I'm, and I'm sure, but so, in terms of some of the major concerns, there is unfortunately a need for displacement. In the case of the folks that I worked with and knew personally on the Northwest 1 project, they were given vouchers and the opportunity to move elsewhere. Even the president of the Tenant Association in Temple Courts, when I spoke to her later, said, "I really like where I'm living. I don't really want to come back." So we can't really force people to come back to where they lived before if they like their living situation where they are elsewhere, otherwise, or where they are now. That would be as much of a violation of constitutional rights as was suggested by some of the, some of the givers of testimony was the case. So it's, you know, and I suppose I should note last, one of the reasons that Berry Farm was chosen as a new community site was, number one, as Mr. Dixon noted, a substantial amount of money has been spent over the years attempting to rehabilitate those buildings, and the feeling was, it just was not worth trying to apply another Band-Aid. There needed to be a large-scale redevelopment. And secondly, it was chosen because it was one of the hotspots, one of the highest crime locations in the city, according to the Metropolitan Police Department. So the notion was, looking to past examples of Grotro and the moving-to-opportunity projects that HUD had done, there are some notable, notable benefits of being in a mixed-income community that have been documented by social scientists, and that was one of the ideas behind the notion of trying to achieve a mixed-income community on that site.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I still am wondering, so our job today is to, is to determine, this is not federal land. So I'm not sure why it's before us.
The staff has found that there are no concerns regarding federal interests in the matters before us, simply because of registered speakers who had, who wanted a forum. That's the only reason it's before us, I believe.
This is a regular zoning referral where all PUDs that are, that go before the zoning commission are sent to NCPC to determine if there's any adverse impact on the federal interest from that PUD. That's, that's the reason it's before us.
The agency's authority, NCPC's authority, conveys upon it a right to comment on zoning map amendments and text amendments. And so the process that's been developed is the zoning commission refers them to NCPC, and NCPC looks to them to see and to ensure that the proposal is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
And so the EDR recommendation is to find that it is not inconsistent, the PUD, the first stage of the PUD is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. With that recommendation is...
I'm sorry, I have another question. I don't understand how there can be such a great deal of misunderstanding about a NEPA role.
I don't think we misunderstand.
We don't misunderstand. So, um, okay, this is really unusual, seems to me. Can somebody help me understand this? I, I mean, when you hear, you hear completely opposing testimony, and, and, what am I not getting? How can there be such a deep misunderstanding?
This sort of misunderstanding has occurred in the past. It often airs at the zoning commission itself, and that's the only thing I would speak to that in the past. People have brought the issue of environmental impact statements before the zoning commission, and they simply do not apply. It's not, you know, NEPA simply does not apply in that circumstance. It only applies when there's a federal undertaking.
I got that.
There isn't one here.
So it just seems, that's why I'm asking, because it seems such a clear delineation.
It, it is, but it, you know, you'll have to ask perhaps the, you know, the attorney who made the case that NEPA does apply, why they think it does, but there's really no federal undertaking.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded by Ms. White.
Mr. Chairman.
Still discussion, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to associate myself with your, your comment and the comments of others regarding the federal interest review role of NCPC, but also associate myself with Mr. Dixon's and Ms. McCarthy's comments addressing the concerns. The, uh, the zoning commission shares those, many of those, those concerns that were stressed today, has heard those concerns, and the, as Ms. McCarthy pointed out, the zoning order that will have covenants that run with the land will require certain, will require the replacement units, one-for-one. The, well, the 344 on-site and 100 very nearby off-site, they will be of comparable size, depending upon the needs of the, of the families. And Ms. McCarthy's right, the build-first concept was something that was part of the new communities initiative when it was first announced. In addition to all the obstacles that you pointed out to why it's not feasible here because of the condition of the housing, the occupancy of all the housing, one of the benefits of the plan that is before the zoning commission is the, and what's before the, was in the small-area plan that the council unanimously approved, is the establishment of an upgrading, upgrading, the major upgrading of the infrastructure of this area, including establishing a street grid and sidewalks that don't exist there right now, which will help make the place not, much more better connected to each other, but to the rest of the, to the, to the surrounding communities as well, and will also make it, I think, safer. Sidewalks and water and sewer upgrades. So that's just another unfortunate reason why the build-first concept could not be implemented in this particular case. But there will be a revitalization of this community with quality housing for the current residents who want to return, and with neighborhood-serving commercial retail services that don't exist there at all right now, and, uh, they park and other, and other improvements. So I'm supportive of this project, as I was at the zoning commission.
Thank you. Mr. Tereza, we're about to vote, but I think you may have wanted to...
Yeah.
...answer a query about NEPA?
Yeah. Well, it's my understanding that they're going to be using federal funds for what they're doing at Berry Farm to build the project, and so that's what the nexus between NEPA and NCPC, or perhaps HUD, I, I am of the understanding that NCPC, part of its authority does come from NEPA, and it's on your website.
For federal undertaking and in compliance, but this is not a federal undertaking.
Not.
Anything else to add, Ms. Skylar? Before we vote?
No, only that if there is federal funding traced, traced back to the source of that federal funding, and that may be where your deeper requirement is. I'm not saying for sure, but some unsolicited advice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hearing no further comment among commission members, it's been moved and seconded. Are we ready to vote? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR say aye. Opposed, no. EDR passes. Thank you very much. Very good, very good comment, and we appreciate all who came to express their concerns. We'll now go back to five, what, 5C? No. What are we going back to? 5C, yes. 5C is the planned unit development and related map amendments for North Capitol Street and Michigan Avenue Northwest regarding the Vision McMillan Partners Project. We have Mr. Detman. And I will note that we have 13 speakers, I believe. Talk quickly.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Staff will be presenting its recommendation on a referral from the zoning commission of the District of Columbia for a first-stage PUD, consolidated PUD, and related map amendment at square 3128, or the site more commonly known as the former McMillan Slow Sand Filtration Plant. The site is highlighted in this map in red. It's located approximately two and a half miles north of the US Capitol along North Capitol Street. Here you can see the site in relation to the surrounding context, in relation to the boundary of the historical Enfante City and other notable landmarks within the city. Here's a closer, slightly closer look at the site, again in red. It's approximately a 25-acre site with the Veteran Administration Hospital to the north, as well as Washington Children's Hospital Center. Further north is the campus of the Armed Forces Retirement Home. Catholic University is off to the east. Immediately west is the McMillan Reservoir, as well as Howard University. And again, one more closer look. Here's the approximately 25-acre site of the proposed PUD bound by Michigan Avenue on the north, North Capitol Street on the east, Channing Street on the south, and First Street on the west. First Street separates the proposed PUD site from the active McMillan Reservoir, which at one time, the PUD site and the reservoir were owned and operated by the federal government, operated by the Army Corps of Engineers. And the, the site is actually, as part of its history, it was Washington DC's first water treatment facility. Again, you can see the relationship of the PUD site to Howard University and the hospital centers to the north, and the, generally the Roehouse neighborhoods that are located to the south and to the east across North Capitol Street. You see a boundary around both the McMillan Reservoir site as well as the PUD site. That is the boundary of the McMillan Park Reservoir Historic District, which I'll touch upon a little bit later. Both sides of the site in 1906 were designated as a park and a memorial to the late Senator James McMillan, due to his role as the chairman in the McMillan Senate Park Commission, which you may be familiar with, in terms of the, the plans that that commission had for the mall, the extension of the mall, but also its plans for the extension of the parks and open space system throughout Washington DC. Following 19, following its 1906 designation as a park and memorial, the grounds in the park were designed by noted landscape architect Frederick Law Olmsted, Jr. I already noted it was federally owned and operated by the Army Corps of Engineers up until 1986, when the slow sand filtration side of the site was decommissioned as a result of a chemical treatment facility located west of First Street. A year later, the eastern portion of the site was sold to the District of Columbia for private, for mixed-use development, subject to a series of covenants between GSA and the district, which were recorded with the property deed. In a, in a, in a sentence, those covenants essentially made any development on the site subject to the review and satisfaction of the DC State Historic Preservation Officer. If the DC shipo did not agree with the plans that would be referred to the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, that has occurred, the DC shipo has accepted those plans, and so the referral to the ACHP was not required. Secondly, the covenants required the preparation of a Historic Preservation Plan, which has been, been prepared. In terms of its listing, the, the site was listed in the DC Inventory of Historic Places in 1991, and recently in the Federal National Register of Historic Places in 2013. Here's a couple of views around the site showing existing conditions. Here's the view from Channing and North Capitol Street looking northwest. You can see that the site sits elevated above North Capitol Street as a result of the site, as a result of the underground infrastructure that exists. Essentially, the site is constructed on an elevated plinth, and underground is the infrastructure associated with the former sand filtration operation. This is looking from the northeast at North Capitol in Michigan, looking to... This is looking from the northeast at North Capitol in Michigan, looking towards the southwest. North Capitol Street, as you move north, raises an elevation, so you can see here that the site does not sit above North Capitol Street, rather it sits below the elevation of Michigan and North Capitol Street. And finally, this is looking from the southwest, looking down towards the Capitol, looking down to the southeast. You can see how Michigan Avenue sits elevated above the site. I noted that the, the site is, both the west side, as well as the east side of First Street, is included in the McMillan Park Reservoir Historic District. The west side of the site, the active reservoir site, dates to the late 1800s, and includes the reservoir, the filtration plant, as well as a, the McMillan Memorial Fountain. On the east side of the, of First Street, the slow sand filtration facility dates to 1902 to 1905, and like I said, has been decommissioned and sold, is now currently owned by the District of Columbia. I wanted to just quickly go through some of the historic infrastructure and historic resources that are on the site, to show you how many of them have been incorporated into the proposed development. There are two service courts located in the north and south of the site, which you can see a historic photo here, and a photo of existing conditions. The service court have, have a series of elements that were used for purposes of storing and washing the sand. A series of sand storage bins, which you can see here, in their current existing condition, those particular elements were used after the sand was brought up from underground and was washed. It was used for storing the sand before it was placed back underground for filtration purposes. You can see here the sand washers, which the sand went into after it was brought up from underground. The regulator houses, there's an example of their existing condition. The service court walls and the portals that exist along the edges of the service courts, the portals provide access down into the underground filtration cells. Thank you, Dipra. There's a series of approximately 2,100 manhole covers across the site. Those exist for purposes of replacing sand down into the underground filtration cells, as well as providing light and air to the workers that would work down there to maintain the filter cells. I mentioned that the original landscape design for the park and the memorial was prepared by Frederick Law Olmsted, Jr. Part of his plan entailed a perimeter walk around the, the outside of the eastern side of the site, which you can see here, prior to its planting with the double L.A. of trees along the sidewalk. Remnants of that walk currently still exist. Here's a good look at the Olmsted Walk, following the plantings of the double, double L.A. of trees. And then finally, there's a series of 20 underground filter cells at the site, and many of them are intact. Some of them have been found to have severe deterioration. Those are marked with Xs here. Currently, there is some DC water construction going on at the site as part of the First Street Tunnel Project, where two of the cells have already been demolished. But as part of the PUD process, or the proposal, Cell 14 will be preserved in full. A portion of Cell 29 will be exposed and preserved, and potentially Cell 27 could be preserved, but that won't be determined until the DC Water Project is completed. So moving into the proposed site plan for the first-stage and consolidated PUD, here you can see the site again. It's approximately 25 acres, and here's the proposed Plan Unit Development. The site has been broken up into seven parcels, which I'll briefly describe to you. The first-stage PUD comprises of Parcells 2 and 3. Again, this is a first-stage PUD. The commission will see this again after the master planning process completes for that, but what we know about this is what's proposed is two residential buildings at eight stories high, making up approximately 250 residential units, 25 of them being affordable, and then a future healthcare facility or medical office building at eight stories high, comprising approximately 170,000 square feet. The remainder of the site is before you as a consolidated first-stage and second-stage PUD, which comprises Parcells 1, 7, 4, 5, and 6. With the PUD as a related map amendment, the site is currently unzoned due to its former ownership by the federal government, and as part of the PUD, a, a related map amendment is being proposed to zone the northern portion of the site, C-3C, and the southern portion of the site, south of the north service court, as a mixed-use commercial residential. I've already described generally what we know about the first-stage PUD, so I'll move to the components of the, the consolidated PUD. Parcel 1, which is located on the northernmost section of the site, is proposed for a, a two-tower structure comprised of medical office buildings or a healthcare facility with ground-floor retail. These buildings will reach a maximum height of 115 feet, stepping down slightly as you move towards North Capitol Street. The buildings will be separated by a new half-street, which will run along the center spine of the site. Along Michigan Avenue will be an open space or a healing garden associated with the medical office facility. In addition, on the eastern side, I had mentioned the preservation of Cell 14 in the future after some work related to DC Water's First Street Tunnel Project completes. This is the view looking east along Michigan Avenue. Here are the two healthcare buildings that are proposed. This is looking west. Here's the healing garden, the two buildings separated by half-street. And this is along North Capitol Street looking northwest. You can see the north service court, how it's been integrated into the development plan. Here's Cell 14, which sets back the buildings approximately 150 feet from North Capitol Street, and this is a look down on the future proposal for Cell 14, again after that DC Water complete, work completes. Moving to parcel number four, what's proposed for parcel number four is a multifamily building, six stories high, comprising approximately 193 market-rate apartment units, as well as 85 senior units. In addition, there'd be a ground-floor grocery store. In total, the building will comprise approximately 300,000 square feet. Moving in a southward direction to parcel five, which spans the width of the site, parcel five is proposed for approximately 146 row homes, 128 market rate, 18 affordable, spanning between three and four stories high. And so this is the look, this is the view looking south along half-street, towards the south service court, seeing what's contemplated in terms of the architectural design of the, the proposed rowhouses. This is looking a lot, looking west along the south service court. You can see how the, the service court has been integrated into the design, along with those service court walls and the entry portals, and there's the three- and four-story rowhouses. And then finally, parcel six and seven, along the southern portion of the site, as well as the north service court. Along the southern edge of the site is approximately a six-and-a-half-acre park, open park space, which will comprise of large open spaces, a water play area, an adult exercise area, a 17,000-square-foot community center, an outdoor amphitheater, as well as a stormwater pond, which will obviously take care of, or help accommodate some of the stormwater requirements of the DC government, but it also is reflective of the site's subterranean hydrology, as a portion of Tiber Creek actually reaches up into this area. So here's a look above North Capitol Street, looking northwest. You can see that, that six-and-a-half-acre park. Here you can see that as part of the proposal, Olmsted Walk is being reintroduced around the perimeter of the site with a double L.A. of trees. There's the community center. This is a, a view looking east across the open play space, towards the community center. This is along North Capitol Street. As I mentioned, Cell number 29 will be exposed, and some of the historic fabric will be brought to daylight, so people can see it, walk underneath it. And then this is a look west along the, the service court, as you can see how that's been integrated into the design. This is parcel seven, this is the north service court, which we've already taken a look at already. And so in terms of analysis, the site, NCPC has had an interest in this site for quite some time. Following the sale of the site and transfer of the site from GSA to the DC government, NCPC subsequently reviewed a, a series of amendments to the district elements of the comprehensive plan in 1990. During its review, the commission requested that consideration be given to preserving the open space character of the site as a complement to the reservoir to the west, as well as protecting views across the site from the AFRH to the Capitol. It also expressed concern that the land use change from parks and open space to mixed-use, medium-density residential, moderate-density commercial may not maintain the site's character. Subsequent to that, in 2007, the commission also reviewed a series of amendments to the district elements of the comprehensive plan, and found that the district elements at that time would not have a negative impact on the interests or functions of the federal government, but did note that with regard to 10 large sites located throughout the city, that future development may require additional commission review and analysis on specific projects to, to gauge the impacts to the federal interest. Most recently, in July of this year, NCPC staff sent comments to the zoning commission during the hearing for the particular, for this particular PUD, expressing concern that the current proposal may potentially have impacts on views from the Armed Forces Retirement Home, and particularly from the views from Scott statue, as that view is identified as a protected view in the 2008 AFRH master plan. The zoning commission granted staff's request to, to conduct some additional analysis along with the development team, which took place, and the staff and the development team worked together and reached a solution where some changes to the proposed healthcare facility on the north side of the site resulted in an improvement on the, on the impacts to the view, and an opening up of the view from the Scott statue to the Capitol. Essentially, what, what was required is a reduction in the height of the buildings on the north from 130 to 115, and a shifting of the western mass of the one building by 20 feet towards the east. We'll take a look at that in a moment. With regard to the comprehensive plan, the map amendment to rezone the property from unzoned to mixed-use CR and C-3C, staff finds that the, the proposal is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan future land use map identifies the site for a mix of land uses, ranging from medium-density residential, moderate-density commercial, and parks and open space. The overall FAR proposed for across the entire site is approximately 2.36, subtracting areas devoted to streets. Overall, the FAR is under the 3.0 that would be permitted, within the lowest moderate-density commercial zone, which is, which is a C-2A, according to the future land use map of the, of the district elements. A large portion of the site will be retained for open space, approximately 12 acres will be provided as open space. Again, it's a 25-acre site, and a large portion of the site in parcel, parcel number five will be constrained to three- or four-story development. Finally, development has been clustered towards the north end of the site to allow for the large park space on the southern third of the site. The proposal preserves and reuses many of the existing above and, some of the below-ground structures on the site, as I've already mentioned. It retains a substantial portion of the site's open space character along the south edge of the site, as well as the north service court, and it retains external visual relationships with the reservoir and other surrounding neighborhoods, or landmarks. I wanted to take a minute to take a look at the views and the analysis that staff and the development team conducted with regard to views from the Scott statue and the Lincoln Cottage looking south from the AFRH. This is a photo of Lincoln Cottage and the Scott statue, and then looking south, this is the current view from the porch of the Lincoln Cottage. You can see the new Scott building, which the commission reviewed not too long ago. And this is the current view from the Scott statue. Currently, it's overgrown. The AFRH has a long-term plan to open up this view, and if that was to occur, a, a view towards the Capitol Dome does exist. This is showing sightlines from the Scott statue and the Lincoln Cottage, and as you zoom in, you can see the, the sightline from the Scott statue runs along First Street on the west, where the sightline from the Lincoln Cottage would go between the two healthcare facilities. So this is a rendering prepared by the architects team, and what the series of images up at the top here will show you is the changes that have been made to the healthcare facilities on the north side of the site. This is the June proposal, and the, the massing of that west, that healthcare facility on the northwest of the, the site. The first change that was made was a drop of the height by 15 feet, down to 115 feet, and then the mass of that building was relocated to the east by 20 feet. Essentially, what staff thinks is, what this has done is provided additional breathing room around the Capitol Dome and exposed additional foreground and background context against which to read the dome from the Scott statue. This is actually a zoomed-in view of that, of that view shed. This is the actual view shed from the Scott statue, so you can see the U.S. Capitol against the horizon line with the healthcare facility located here. This is actually the existing Washington Hospital Center here. This is just showing the June proposal, and then the changes that were made in dropping the height and shifting the mass to the east. And then finally, with regard to the views from the Lincoln Cottage, these, again, these were proposed, or these were prepared by the architect, showing the existing view from Lincoln Cottage. This is a zoomed-in view, showing that the sightline from the Lincoln Cottage towards the Capitol, even if you were to remove all of that vegetation, is currently blocked by existing Laguard Building and the Fourwood Building located on the southeast portion of the AFRH campus. This is the view currently from the Lincoln Cottage. Again, this is the zoomed-in view. From the second floor of the Lincoln Cottage, approximately 10 feet higher, this, you get a little bit more exposure of the Capitol Dome, but again, it's largely blocked by some existing buildings that are on the AFRH campus. And so with that, it's the executive director's recommendation to find that the proposed first-stage PUD, consolidated PUD, and related map amendment is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. To note that the, that the development team responsible for the proposal worked closely with staff to address concerns regarding impacts of the proposed healthcare buildings on publicly accessible views from the AFRH campus, and in particular, from the Scott statue. To note that the proposal provides a total density across the site that is consistent with the medium and moderate land use designations denoted in the 2007 Comp Plan Land Use Map, and to note that the proposal preserves and reuses many of the existing above and below-ground structures, retains a substantial portion of the site's open space character through the provision of park space at the south, thereby maintaining a strong visual and interpretive relationship to the reservoir located to the west, of which the site was once part of. And finally, to note that if modifications are made to the PUD, or if zoning approval for the current PUD expires and a new proposal is developed, that the total development density across the site, the site should remain consistent with what's currently proposed. The extent of open spaces provided currently should be maintained or increased. The extent to which historic, historic structures are preserved and reused, and the visual connections established with the surroundings should remain consistent with the current PUD. And finally, the impacts to publicly accessible views from the AFRH campus should be considered. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Detman. As noted, we have 13 people who signed up to speak before the deadline. If you are representing an organization, you have five minutes, and a quick look, there may be as many as four who have qualified for five minutes. The other nine or so will have three minutes. If you're representing yourself as an individual, you have three minutes. The first three speakers will be in this order: Tony Norman, Ann Sellen, and Kirby Vining. Tony Norman? Mr. Norman, representing McMillan Park Committee, you have five minutes. Welcome.
I'm sorry. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before the National Capitol Planning Commission. I represent the McMillan Park, which is the organization that had this site designated a historic site, locally as well as nationally. We've been involved with this project for over 20 years. I also served as president of the Bloomingdale Civic Association, which is the neighborhood surrounding. I'm a past president of that. I served as chair of ANC 1B, which is the ANC that represent at least two-thirds of the historic site. It was my single-member district, the historic, two-thirds of that historic site. I also served on the Committee of 100 as a trustee in the past, and I presently a member of the Committee of 100. And I say that because the Committee of 100 is responsible for the formation of this body to protect the federal interests of the national, the nation's capital. And I just want to say that if ever there was a federal interest that this body needed to be concerned with, it is this property, McMillan Reservoir. This is not just a usual PUD to be rushed through, like other PUDs that we only comment on. I think we need to take a, you all need to take a close look at the executive director's report. I think it was very premature, and they're agreeing to some of the things here at the 11th hour. It was done very quickly, without really consulting either the Committee of 100, the National Trust, the national organizations that are involved with the views of this property, as well as the Soldiers' Home, and those who've been involved for many years with the protection, not just of the views, but the historic character of the site. To be done overnight in a rush agreement, I think I have some reservations about that. What is the trouble? What is the federal interest in this site? The federal interest is the view, the historic character? In fact, this body, I don't know if any of you all were here in 1990 on this commission present. I don't think so. I testified when this project came before this body in 1990, when they amended the comprehensive plan. I mean, that was five mayors ago, four council members ago, I don't know how many planning directors ago, and for me, maybe 100 pounds ago. But we were here, and this body put in its report when it approved the comprehensive plan to this project, and I'll read from that report- plan to this project, and I'll read from that report that this body had grave concerns about MacMillan. Briefly, it stated, "MacMillan has a distinctive open space character and is scenically desirable as a federal interest. Any structure introduced by the district on the MacMillan Park should be widely spaced, not to exceed four-story height buildings from the Veteran Hospital, preferably lower transition heights, picturesque views, and immediate landscape and the park environment." That's what this body said it was concerned about and wanted to protect, the views. But clearly, this plan, and not that we oppose the development, you know, there's a concept that says, "Too big to fail." They're saying that this is too big to be further modified. Now, I don't know how many people might be intimidated by that. This needs to be further modified in terms of the views. Now, if you look at the executive director's report, they have a very narrow definition of views. They took the view from the old Soldiers' Home, and they kind of moved buildings around and cut something off just to get a very narrow view. The views that are to be protected are the view from the reservoir itself to the site. I don't know how many of you all have been on the site. If you stand at the corner of Michigan Avenue and North Capitol, and if you haven't been there, you should drive by there on your way home today, and get out and stand by that, stand on the corner of Michigan Avenue and North Capitol Street, you will get a sense of the majestic view of this site, with the U.S. Capitol, Washington Monument, the Howard University Tower, the Catholic Basilica. It is a majestic, spiritual view that you will not get anywhere else. All of those need to be considered in this particular project. This commission said that this site should be one of its top sites for national memorials. This commission voted on that, that MacMillan should be considered as a, that this option was never pursued. Part of the problem here is that this, you would think there would have been competitive bidding for this project, and I think that's relevant here today. The reason it's relevant, there was no competitive bidding for the master developers and the vertical development for this site, kind of slipped through. We would have had much more competition, you could have, they could have worked on the view sheds for this site, gotten historic preservation, gotten all of the things that we wanted, but that's relevant today. So, in concluding what I'm appealing to this body to do, there is still an opportunity to revise these plans. There is a federal interest, the view and the historic character. Do not rush this. We can take time to do that. This body should have the will, it has the legal authority, it should not just approve this executive director's report without further review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Ms. Sellen, Ann Sellen.
My name is Ann Seline. You did have a building shifted for this, but it does not meet the requirements of what you yourself prescribed for this site. We find that any structure to be introduced with a district-owned part of MacMillan Park should be widely spaced, not exceed the four-story height of the Veterans Hospital, and preferably have lower transitional heights and picturesque roof lines to blend with immediate landscape and park environments. It means nothing over four stories is really what you prescribed for this site. Also, in the comprehensive plan for Washington, MC 2.6.5, it says, "Scale and mix of new uses recommends that where development takes place, it should consist of moderate and medium-density housing, retail, and other compatible uses. Any development on the site should maintain view sheds and vistas, and be situated in a way that minimizes impacts on historic resources and adjacent development." Well, that's not just restricted to one site on the Old Soldiers' Home. As a matter of fact, Don Jackson, for this commission, did a number of views from the Old Soldiers' Home, and I put those into the zoning commission hearings. But what will be compromised for multitudes of citizens who pass MacMillan every day on Michigan Avenue and North Capitol Streets, tens of thousands of people, these views, the views of the sand towers will be obstructed by the medical office building, which is 115 feet high, from views from Michigan Avenue, the National Cathedral Towers from North Capitol Street. There's a significant internal view from the park, such as to the Washington Monument, the towers of the old post office, and actually, you can see the dome of the National Cathedral. If you look from the Corps of Engineers site, which by the way, is federally owned, or Fourth Street just beyond it, you won't be able to see the dome of the shrine. That will be totally lost. All these views are obliterated by the buildings proposed. Nor would the striking towers, sand towers, be visible any longer from Michigan after being blocked by the 150-foot-high buildings. They could only be glimpsed through very small windows from East Capitol and First Streets. Also, there are other things that are completely violated in the comprehensive plan. Policy MC 2.6.55 of the comprehensive plan for MacMillan requires moderate to medium-density housing, retail, and other compatible uses. Well, that's not 115-feet buildings or 80-foot buildings. Also, policy MC 2.6.1 requires, in the comp plan, the reuse plans for MacMillan Reservoir Sand Filtration Site dedicate a substantial contiguous portion of the site for recreation and open space, consistent with the 1901 MacMillan Plan of Connectivity. Well, we only have a small portion of the site dedicated to recreational open space. And by the way, Ward 5, where this is located, has lost 300 acres of park space since the MacMillan Plan was written. 300 acres. The Old Soldiers' Home is fenced off, and all of MacMillan, and there's very little recreational open space in Ward 5. It's just, it's a park desert, frankly, and this makes things worse, and it really is a removal of some of those emeralds from the emerald necklace, which should be reinforced by NCPC and not ignored, because we can't just keep chipping away at it and chipping away at it. This is a very important site.
Thank you, Ms. Seline. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up is Kirby Vining, followed by Mary Pat Rowan, followed by Philip Blair.
Thank you. I'm Kirby Vining. I live about four houses off the, across North Capitol Street from the park. In the NCPC executive director's testimony before the House Oversight and Government Reform Committee on December 2, 2013, concerning the Hyde Act, I heard the following. I've got on the paper there five quotes, I'll just read one. "Congress has acted as steward of the Capitol City's form to ensure that the image and experience of the Capitol City reflects the preeminence of our civic and democratic institutions and national icons, including a lasting symbolic skyline recognized around the world. The NCPC, by mission and by statute, prioritizes and protects these national interests." I would argue, based on the above-sworn testimony, that the NCPC September 15, 2014, letter to D.C. zoning commission chairman Anthony Hood, agreeing to certain minor modifications to the proposed plans for the MacMillan Sand Filtration Site, throws the symbolic skyline baby out with General Scott's bathwater. While it's quite true that the proposed plan has been modified to accommodate a view of the Capitol from the Scott statue of the AFRH, the proposed development blocks much of the rest of the Washington skyline from North Capitol Street in adjacent areas, as Ms. Seline has just described in more detail. These views are the northern gateway to our city. This seems to me an abdication of the NCPC's responsibility. The D.C. zoning commission has its own battle to fight in arguing against the comprehensive plan guidance that only medium- or moderate-scale development is recommended for the site. But how is protection of the skyline seen on the northern approach to Washington not within the purview of the NCPC? As shown in the quotes above, this is apparently exactly the kind of national interest that the NCPC was designed to protect. The applicant argues that the NCPC's jurisdiction is limited, in this case, to an evaluation of impacts on the federal elements of the comprehensive plan. The applicant further argues that there is no basis for the NCPC staff to assert control over any private development in the three-plus miles between the Armed Forces Retirement Home and the Capitol. But the land in question is not private. It is owned by the District of Columbia government, and thus immediately governed by the Home Rule Charter's restriction of authority contrary to the Hyde Act, which act stipulates 90-foot heights in residential neighborhoods. My home is in the residential area adjacent to the site. In its letter to the zoning commission dated August 25, 2014, the NCPC states that the current development proposal will have substantial impacts on the publicly-accessible views from the Armed Forces Retirement Home, Washington Campus, particularly towards the U.S. Capitol Building, and that the proposed development would significantly alter the view from the Scott statue by blocking the view of the U.S. Capitol dome and disrupting the character-defining horizontal backdrop established by the topographic bowl. These arguments, it seem to me, with the simple exception of the reference to the Capitol dome, all still stand, and recommend that the NCPC look at the larger damage this development does to a significant part of the North Capitol Street skyline, rather than agreeing with the applicant that a token snapshot of the dome is still visible. I think it would be a hypocritical betrayal of the NCPC's mandate and the MacMillan Plan to make, to take any other stand. The D.C. zoning commission's handling of the comprehensive plan recommendations are indeed a local matter. If C-3C and CR zoning are consistent with medium and moderate land use, is anything not inconsistent with it? Thank you. You have the rest of my remarks.
Thank you. We do, and they're part of the public record.
Mary Pat Rowan cannot be here because of family obligation. She endorses what I'm about to say, even though I am her husband. My name is Philip Blair Jr. Got to be honest. My name is Philip Blair Jr. Congratulations, this is a red water, a red letter day for you all. I'm the second anthropologist as defined to you today. I am a resident of Ward 5, and I testify on my own behalf, even though I have long been a member of citizens groups concerned for the future of MacMillan Park site. I have no financial interest in the failure or the success of the project, except as a taxpayer, of course. I am here to ask for your attention to a constellation of issues regarding traffic and transportation in the area centering on the proposed development site. These issues have serious repercussions for the safety and security of the inhabitants of the District of Columbia and the visitors to it. These issues present a clear federal interest, which has not yet received your attention, apparently, but are too far important to be ignored. I must add that as a proponent of autonomy of the District of Columbia, and as a proponent of statehood, it jars me to be approaching a federal agency, the NCPC, to deal with issues that should better have been dealt with in the ordinary course of events within the political process of the District of Columbia. Nevertheless, we seem to have no alternatives. First, because these issues are of such importance, and secondly, because they have been handled so irresponsibly and even foolishly by our local officials, and I append a list of those officials. I take comfort in knowing that the NCPC will treat the district just like you treat Maryland and Virginia. The problem in a nutshell is this: The transportation infrastructure of this area of the city is already failing on a daily basis in ways that threaten public health and safety. I and some friends have spent many mornings since this spring at the intersection of North Capitol and Michigan Avenue waving "Save MacMillan Park" signs. The failure of this intersection to handle the current traffic load is apparent. We often see ambulances forced to use the wrong side of North Capitol Street in order to reach the Washington Hospital Center. They must cross the median and drive up directly into oncoming traffic, which you hope stops. This, needless to say, is highly dangerous and only justifiable because being caught in traffic is even more dangerous for the patients in these ambulances. In the case of any incidents downtown, routes to the north to avoid the bottleneck bridge crossings of the Anacostia and the Potomac will be crucial. The White House area has a relatively large number of routes to the north and west, but Capitol Hill has many fewer options. North Capitol Street is the most important emergency evacuation route, and it provides access to medical facilities that might be necessary in the case of a natural or man-made disaster. Both the National Department of Transportation and the Department of Homeland Security should have been consulted, and their advice and findings should inform NCPC's consideration of this project. To my knowledge, these federal agencies have not ever been consulted. They should be consulted now. It is better to do right late rather than never. I would be very happy to be convinced that my fears are real-founded, but common sense makes me fear the worst. There is no more compelling federal interest than the safety of federal officials and employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Next up is George Oberlander, followed by Hugh Youngblood, and then Elizabeth Merritt. Mr. Oberlander, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you. For the record, my name is George Oberlander. I've been an urban planning and zoning consultant since my retirement in 1996 from the staff of this commission. I have presented expert witness testimony, which has been passed out to you. You should have three documents with my name on it. The zoning, this testimony to the zoning commission, the testimony before the mayor's agent this past Monday, and the statement that I'm going to highlight, rather than, because I only have five minutes, I'm representing the friends of MacMillan. I strongly disagree with the executive director's recommendation on page three that the project is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol. The project does conform to a few general comprehensive plan policies and goals, such as the use of the site for community development, or mixed-use development, mixed-income housing, and park, but it does not conform to the eight specific policies in the area element of the comprehensive plan, which I've identified in the testimony, and particularly in the mayor's agent's testimony, page three through seven of the mayor's agent's hearing this past Monday. These site-specific land use density, historic preservation, and park and recreation open space, and other specific policies outweigh or need to be given greater weight than the supporting general policies in evaluating the required so-called not-inconsistent finding to planning commission. And in my opinion, the planning commission's finding is equal to the zoning commission's finding. The Home Rule Act was written in 1973 and '74 to balance this thing, so that it's not just a report. Yes, the form of the document going to the commission is a report, but the responsibility of the commission is to determine not inconsistency. In my May 13 testimony at the zoning commission, I also indicated that my professional planning opinion, the applicant's requested C-3C and CR zoning is not appropriate in relation to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, and designation of the site for mixed uses, medium-density, which is an R3, R4, R5 zoning classification with mid-rise to four-to-seven-story buildings, and the moderate-density commercial, which is a C-2A, C-2B, and C-3A, and parks and recreation open space. That's the definition in the land use map. The zoning classification of C-3C requested here represents high bulk, completely out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, and therefore inconsistent with the basic medium- and moderate-density land use designation. You've talked about the minor shift in the massing of the medical office building, I won't repeat that. This minor change in location does not alter the fundamental point made by the staff letter of August 25, and I quote from that letter, that "it appeared impacts of the views are a result of height permitted under the proposed CR3 and CR zoning on the site, which may be inconsistent with the future land use map." Well, I'm here to say that it is inconsistent with the land use map. The staff is a little bit wishy-washy on that, in my opinion. In addition, page four of that letter also points out that the C-3C zoning request part of the MacMillan development is typically considered to be high-density commercial zone that permits buildings of the height of 90 feet with a matter of right, or with a PUD up to 130 feet. The letter concludes that, and again, I quote, "The high-density development proposal for the site appears to be inconsistent with comprehensive plan policy specific to the MacMillan site and the land use designation shown on the future land use map." The EDR before you acknowledges that, in a quote, "Components of the C-3C zoning proposal at the site, such as the allowed 130-foot height of the PUD, that may make development proposal to the site appear to be inconsistent with the comp plan policy specific to the MacMillan site and the land use designation shown on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan." That's at the lower part of page two of my statement. In light of that concession, how can the commission find that there is no inconsistency with the comprehensive plan? The views of the healthcare building proposed to be located in northwest corner and illustrated on figures 13 and 14 in the EDR clearly show how out of place the 115-foot building will be in a three-to-four-story, in relation to the three- or four-story Armed Forces Retirement Home north of Michigan Avenue. There are other historic views being impacted, and those have been described by other people, and I won't address those. The EDR's rationale, rationals, that high-density by averaging the different mix- The EDR's rationale—that high-density by averaging the different mixed-use densities, or FAR, over the 25-acre site, to mathematically lower the total average-floor-area ratio. To my knowledge, there is no such floor-area ratio averaging provision in the zoning regulation. The FAR averaging is a rationalization to get approval. It certainly does not deal with the higher building height that would be allowed compared to the immediate surrounding residential and institutional uses. In fact, permitting such an averaging maneuver in this case would, in my opinion, set a very dangerous precedent and even pave the way for similar manipulation under the federal 1910 Hyde Act. I've already exceeded the five minutes, I guess. Let me just add one more item, which is at the lower part of page 2. The commission authorizing legislation creates that become the central federal planning agency, and I quote, "created to preserve the important historical and natural features of the National Capitol," Title 40, Section 8711. That puts the burden or responsibility on this commission to preserve historic assets. The McMillan Reservoir Sand Filtration Site is one-of-a-kind, important historic resource and needs to be more protected than the developer has so far indicated. And you've heard about the—
You can wrap up, please.
Yeah. You've heard about the being a centerpiece of a network of open space. Well, at the bottom of page 2 and the top of page 3, I described that entire network. I urge you, commission, to consider the above policy and the other five specific historic policies, the eight identified as being violating of the application proposal to the federal interest, and report back to the zoning commission that the project is inconsistent with several area element policies requiring project modifications, such as lowering the healthcare building height, increasing the open space to at least 50.1% and connecting this linear park concept that's in the McMillan Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Oberlander. Thank you very much. Mr. Youngblood? Mr. Youngblood, you have five minutes.
I'm speaking—I gave my time to Mr. Oberlander on behalf of our organization, so I'll just take three minutes as an individual.
You're very kind. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the commission. Thank you for hearing our concerns. My name is Hugh Youngblood. I'm the executive director for Friends of McMillan Park. I'm the chair of the board of the Sierra Club DC Chapter and former ANC in the Bloomingdale community surrounding McMillan Park. I've lived in the neighborhood for nine years now, and I practice as an engineer, testifying in opposition to the PUD and to the NCPC report from the executive director based on the inaccuracies that we've heard about today. At Friends of McMillan Park, our principal interest is historic preservation of this landmark. Our mission is to protect, restore, and transform historic McMillan Park for the benefit of the public. The project proposed in this PUD includes several violations of specific points of the comprehensive plan. This is a federal interest. McMillan Park is a one-of-a-kind site, and its preservation is a federal interest. McMillan Park is a significant element of the federal city, as a gem in our Emerald Necklace of Parks. Please help us stop these crooks from privatizing and destroying our neighborhood's grand historic federal park. Our neighborhood includes only two-to-three-story buildings and row houses surrounding the park, and this high-density, 10-story building PUD is grossly out of character with the scale of our neighborhood. We need an international design competition to develop an economically viable plan for the preservation, rehabilitation, and McMillan Park, and we hope this commission will play a role in that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Elizabeth Merritt, followed by Carol Lewis Anderson, followed by Erin Mast.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Elizabeth Merritt. I'm deputy general counsel for the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and I'm speaking on behalf of the National Trust, so I'm one of the five-minute speakers. You should have received already a copy of my full written testimony, which I'll summarize. The National Trust has a longstanding interest in the protection of the McMillan site dating back almost 25 years, when we testified here before the commission back in 1990, when the commission first reviewed and adopted the amendment to the DC comprehensive plan to allow development on the site. More recently, we've expressed our opposition to the proposed development before the DC Historic Preservation Review Board, the DC Zoning Commission, and the mayor's agent on historic preservation. The basis of our opposition is that the density and magnitude of the proposed development would be fundamentally inconsistent with the DC comprehensive plan, including the federal interest in the Armed Forces Retirement Home, and inconsistent with the NCPC's own guidance regarding building heights. The National Trust's interest also arises from our specific role in managing President Lincoln's cottage on the grounds of the Armed Forces Retirement Home. Beginning in 2000, we assumed stewardship of President Lincoln's cottage under a 50-year lease from the AFRH. After a restoration, it opened to the public in 2008, giving Americans an exciting opportunity to learn about Lincoln's presidency. In addition to the cottage, we manage a visitor education center. As you'll hear in more detail from the executive director of President Lincoln's cottage, the development plans would have a negative impact on historically significant views from several locations at President Lincoln's cottage. These are important views for public interpretation of the site and their federal interests. The letter submitted by the Armed Forces Retirement Home to the NCPC, August 21, explains in detail why several of these view sheds are important and describes the extensive planning effort undertaken by the AFRH to manage the future development of its own property in a way that will minimize harm to those view sheds. The proposed development here threatens to undermine all of that careful planning by obstructing the very view sheds that the AFRH worked so hard for so many years to preserve. On August 25, citing that letter from AFRH, the NCPC staff initially advised that the building heights in the proposed plan would have substantial impacts on these publicly-accessible views. The subsequent letter sent to the zoning commission by NCPC staff on September 15 attempts to back away from those earlier concerns about the proposed impacts because the applicants agreed to move the section of the medical office building 15 feet to the east. However, that letter focuses solely on the views from the Scott statue to the exclusion of other highly significant historic views. It states—that the September 15 letter states that the Scott statue is the primary view identified in the 2008 master plan issued by the Armed Forces Retirement Home. However, two significant changes have occurred since 2008, which, in our view, make—in our opinion, make these historic view sheds more significant than the view shed from the Scott statue because they're seen by many more people. First, under the National Trust stewardship through our lease with the AFRH, President Lincoln's cottage is now open to the public, together with the visitor education center in the nearby administration building. Since that time, this historic site receives more than 30,000 visitors every year. Second, as described in the AFRH letter, the views from President Lincoln's cottage and the National Historic Landmark District were previously blocked by the non-contributing Scott Building. The AFRH has now demolished that building subsequent to 2008, and thus has reopened these significant views. Because of these two significant changes in the past five years, the fact is that far more people, tens of thousands more people, now have the opportunity to see these historic view sheds than those who may see the historic view from the Scott statue. So in terms of federal interest and the level of impact on the public interest, it's imperative that the commission refrain from approving the PUD and the MAP amendment until the impact of the development on these historic views from Lincoln's cottage and the National Historic Landmark District have been thoroughly evaluated, which has not been done to date, and that the commission require the development to be modified in order to avoid and minimize the negative impact on these historic views. We strongly disagree with the staff recommendation to single out the view from the Scott statue as the only one worthy of protection and throw under the bus these other highly significant historic and publicly-accessible views. I'd like to also mention the issue that was not available at the time we submitted our written testimony, which is we strongly disagree with the rationalization in the staff report to allow the density limitations in the comprehensive plan to be met by averaging, taking parcels where the proposed density would grossly exceed the limits in the comp plan and averaging them with the open space element. We agree with Mr. Oberlander that this is a shell game, which would set a dangerous precedent, and there is no legal authority for it. In conclusion, we ask that the commission members review our full written testimony, and we urge the commission to find that the proposed PUD application and MAP amendment would have a negative impact on the interests or functions of the federal establishment in the National Capitol, especially the historic views from Lincoln's cottage and the National Historic Landmark District, and would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and incompatible with the historic character of the McMillan Park site. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and panel. My name is Carol Lewis Anderson. I'm a long-term resident of Georgetown. There are very few spaces in central Washington that focus on local, city, or residence history. McMillan represents the sole and largest such space. This land is on the National Register for good reason. Multi-generational African-American history, the only de facto integrated park in DC. Architectural history, early artist's footprint on local history, from Olmsted to St. Gaudens to Herbert Adams. Engineering history, state-of-the-art subterranean sand filtration plant, and not the least, in my view, District of Columbia's own-owned parkland. Currently, the only large accessible green spaces in central northwest DC are Rock Creek Park, CNO Canal, Glover Archbald, and Georgetown Waterfront, all none owned by the District of Columbia. Nothing we can do of our own desire with those parks. Senator Carl Hayden, if you recall, tried to turn Glover Archbald Park into a highway. Citizens derailed that attempt. Today, it is the key link in the National Scenic Trail, which Ms. Kelly talked about today, which connects DC, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Virginia, a veritable Emerald Trail. Without that citizen derailing, it would not exist, and that's consistent with the Emerald Necklace concept of the federal city's early designers. McMillan Park is not just local. It's not Bloomingdale. It's not Shaw. It is a federal city treasure. It's a very important issue right now for a federal district that's trying to prove its intelligence and its capability in order to achieve independence. We must be making excellent decisions. Dense, high-rise building on this site would be a terrible one. The GSA, on behalf of the United States Army Corps of Engineers, in fact intended to give this for a dollar to the district if it would be left open as parkland. How can the mayor, the council, the zoning board, and now you not consider the fact that over 7,000 individuals have handwritten petitions to stop this ill-conceived development plan? And we are all independent, unpaid volunteers. My concern here today is that self-interested parties with specific access to the mayor and council and staff have been persuaded—that it would be easier to give the land for private development than to burden the district with the development and maintenance of true parkland. We can handle playgrounds, but we don't have the assets to do that. There is a better course, and that is the conservancy route. And I'll leave most of the rest of my testimony, which you have in front of you. Let me just point out that around the globe, conservancies have been preserving wonderful historic structures and creating iconic areas for cities to claim. We cannot afford to lose this space. Definitively, McMillan, on this high, clean ground, is the definition of view shed. It looks out over federal Washington, so we can talk about, you know, which roof line you can or cannot see. The entire park is a view shed and should be considered as that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Erin Mast, followed by Ann Corbett, then Caitlin Vandenberg. Ms. Mast, welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Chairman and Council. My name is Erin Mast. I'm the executive director of President Lincoln's Cottage on the Armed Forces Retirement Home campus, and I'm also a resident of Ward 5. President Lincoln's Cottage is one of 27 sites of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We're also the only designated national monument in Washington DC and the only national monument in the entire country that is funded without federal operating support. The cottage is a Gothic Revival structure where President Lincoln and his family were invited to live, and they did so for over a quarter of his presidency, but the Lincolns traveled out there outside of their time living there in residence. The cottage is also where, in the first summer Lincoln lived there, he developed the Emancipation Proclamation. He also subsequently made some of the most crucial decisions of the Civil War and weathered his reelection campaign there. The historic significance of the soldier's home was officially recognized in 1974, when four buildings, all still standing, built before the Civil War, and the six surrounding acres were designated a national historic landmark. In 2000, President Clinton designated the cottage and 2.3 surrounding acres a national monument. Beginning in 2000, the National Trust assumed stewardship of President Lincoln's cottage and began an eight-year capital project to preserve, restore, and sustainably rehabilitate and conduct extensive archaeology on the property. After a $15 million investment, which has now today grown to exceed $20 million, the National Trust opened President Lincoln's Cottage to the public in 2008, providing Americans with an intimate, never-before-seen view of President Abraham Lincoln's presidency and family life. In addition to the cottage itself, we have sustainably restored and stewarded a 1905 Beaux-Arts-style building, which serves as our visitor education center, which features related award-winning exhibits and media presentations. And each year, tens of thousands of visitors, not only from the district but across the country and around the world, visit President Lincoln's Cottage, including over 5,000 school students every year. The applicant's development plans would adversely impact the view shed of the Capitol dome from a few specific locations of President Lincoln's cottage, not only the south lawn of the cottage, but also the front entrance of the visitor education center. And also, not only are these important views to the visitor programs, but also to our extensive interpretation of how President Lincoln's cottage used the site as a place to reflect and develop his ideas about what needed to be done during the Civil War. We know that President Lincoln developed the Emancipation Proclamation while he was living at the cottage, and that throughout the cottage, from the veranda, the lawns, the grounds, the cemetery, and along his commute route, the views and the people he saw along the way were very important to his process. President Lincoln believed that the view of the Capitol dome was extraordinarily meaningful to the country as a whole, and in July of 1863, when he was living at the cottage and construction of the Capitol dome was ongoing, President Lincoln is known to have said, "If people see that the Capitol is going on, they will see that it is a sign that we intend the union shall go on." To obscure that symbol of our democracy would be a significant blow to our operation and our interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Corbett, and I am the project director for Vision McMillan Partners, the PUD applicant in question. I'm here today with some technical members of our team, and we're available to ask questions if you have those at the end of the testimony. And I would like to defer the rest of my time to an elected official from the community, Ms. Diane Barnes, who's the recently re-elected, single-member district representative of the Advisory Neighborhood Commission, which this site sits.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and commissioner members. My name is Diane Barnes, the ANC 5E09, senior member district commissioner, in which the McMillan Filtration Site is located. I live two blocks away from this site at 401 Adams Street Northwest. I am a retired employee from the Army Corps of Engineers, and I've been actively involved with the McMillan issues relating to this site for at least 30 years. Also, I've been very actively involved with this community. I've served as the past president of the Bloomingdale Zips Association, the former chair of ANC 5E, whereas I'm now serving my eighth term, and currently serving as the chair of the McMillan Advisory Group. I have observed over the past seven years and participated in all of the Vision McMillan Partners' efforts to work with and for the community to conceptualize and develop plans for the formal McMillan Sand Filtration Plan. On November 19, 2013, at a properly noted community public meeting, ANC 5E voted for in favor, two against, and two was absent during the vote to support the Vision McMillan Partners' Stage 1 of the VMP application. Vision McMillan Partners have come back again and again to the community to address their concerns. They have provided many outreach meetings for the community to voice its opinion and suggestions for this project. They have consistently addressed the majority of the community's concerns, desires, with thorough revision of the master plan. As for the immediate affected area, which is 5E09, senior member district, many longtime residents— residents welcomed this development to do a lot, as do a lot of the new residents, too. The longtime residents recognize that this is the closest that such a development has come with the PUD process for the McMillan Sand Filtration Site. I'm here today to, as a supporter from the community, to, by asking for your approval of the NCPC report to the zoning commission so that they may act on the final zoning order to continue entitlement process. I believe a copy of this has been provided for you if you don't want me to continue.
If you can wrap up in just another minute, that'd be fine.
Okay. This project has already received unanimously approval from the Historic Preservation Review Board, latter support from the surrounding ANC 1B and 5A, including ANC 5E, and the PUD zoning approval on the Phase One of the project, complete with your support today. Having a new state-of-the-art healthcare facility will allow me and other residents to convenient and essential access to medical providers and care in close proximity. Additionally, being able to have the healthcare building directly across the street from the MedStar Washington Hospital Center, Children's Hospital Center, along with the Veterans Hospital, which will help to create the medical hub where collaboration and research will lead to more advancement in the medical treatment for the District of Columbia. As I have mentioned before, VMP has made an effort to, at every opportunity, to address issues that the community has had with this project. And in this case, specifically, the healthcare building height, which was in question. As soon as the original NCPC staff report indicated a concern about the view shed from other historical sites surrounding the McMillan Sand Filtration Site, VMP worked with NCPC on the solution to lower the building height from 130 feet to 115 feet, as well as shifting the building position enough to avoid the chance of blocking and protect the sightline. The willingness of the team to make sure that all affected parties were content is truly indicated of a length that VMP go to make this project right for the community surrounding this site.
If you could wrap up, Ms. Barnes.
Okay. This project will offer significant benefits and amenities to the community that cannot be ignored. These are benefits that will help everyone in the community surrounding the site within the Single Member District and the families across the District of Columbia. I'm extremely grateful for having this opportunity to give you my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Ms. Vandenberg, and then followed by Cheryl Wagner.
Thank you very much. My name is Caitlin Vandenberg. I am a resident in the Bloomingdale neighborhood, just directly below of the site. And also in that capacity, I work as a community volunteer for Friends of McMillan Park. In that capacity, I have submitted 73 letters of opposition against the request for approval. That states, which is also something that is of greatly concern to me as well, that the proposed development is really grossly out of line with the comprehensive plan, specifically the height and the density for the proposed zoning. We have discussions about it already in great detail, so I will not repeat it. And particularly, the open space character that is present at the site, at this historic site, will be completely lost. Ninety percent of the historic underground that was shown, the pictures that were shown today, did not do any justice to how these underground cells really look, will be destroyed. And yes, some of the above-ground structures will be preserved, but there is no adaptive reuse of any of them. There will be a road next to it, so it will be crammed in a road with the exception of a small portion on the north Capitol side. There's no adaptive reuse of it, what would be required as per the standards of the Secretary of Interior. In addition to the 73 letters of opposition that we submitted now to the zoning commission, we submitted 500 letters of opposition. And as was also mentioned before, more than 7,000 people have signed the petition to advocate against this proposed plan, which is way too dense for the community and really will destroy the national landmark that is currently there. And there are many different ways how this could be done, in very different ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Cheryl Wagner. Ms. Wagner?
Okay, thank you. This closes the public hearing, and we'll now return the discussion to the commission. I think there may be some discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make just a few observations. Number one, I think it's important to point out that the statement, which has been repeated many times, that was attributed to NCPC was, as Ms. Merritt provides a, you know, very detailed citation in her testimony, it was an internal memo that was presented to Mr. Gresham. It was not adopted set of comments from National Capitol Planning Commission. It was also done, I think, without any understanding of what was the condition of the underground cells on this property. But in 2001, 2002, I know the Office of Planning undertook a planning study and hired structural engineers. We had no economic interest in, we were not looking to develop the site. We wanted, and we had several community workshops in which several people had indicated they would like to see it as a park. We were dismayed when the structural engineers reported that the condition of so many of the cells was so badly deteriorated that we could not even make it into a soccer field for fear that a soccer player streaking down the field would disappear as the cell crumbled. And the suggestion was, see if you could find a very generous foundation that might repair all those cells, and so you could make it into a park. Such a generous foundation was not found, so it was mothballed for several years after that. And in many ways, that's just the fundamental reality that we confront. The district would always like to have more open space, but this is open space that is so severely deteriorated that unless we can find some source of funds to repair it, it doesn't do anybody any good. It's been walled off and fenced off and inaccessible. So when people refer to it as a park, it's only a park by aspiration because it's not a park by virtue of anybody being able to use it at this point in time. With respect to a number of the comments that were made about it being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, I would be very clear that the generalized land use policy map calls this specifically a land use change area. It was a recognition that the land use that was on there now was not, made no sense to continue as the existing land use. And even the future land use map, which calls for medium-density residential, among other things, I would note medium-density residential can translate into R5C zoning, which is 3.5 FAR. So the FAR on the site is less than even if it had been developed as all medium-density residential with an R5C. When the land was sold by the federal government to the district in 1987, it was specifically sold for, quote, "community development purposes." And I know that many of you are familiar with transfers of jurisdiction and other transfers of federal land to the district, which have come specifically designated as being transferred for recreation purposes. That was not what was specified in the sale document from the federal government. But when we look at the comprehensive plan, particularly the area elements that deal with this section of the city, we have one statement that says with respect to open space, that if the project is developed, there should be, quote, "substantial contiguous portions of the site left available for recreation and open space, either active or passive." I would say that 12 out of 25 acres would, in my book, constitute a significant portion of the site being used for recreation purposes. And with respect to the comment that the averaging of FAR across the site was inappropriate, that is commonly done in the zoning regulations for these kinds of campus settings, where you've got a mixture of uses, but the overall density of the site is, as was pointed out in the Executive Director's recommendation, is consistent with the density that is called for by the comprehensive plan. And I think those would be my major remarks.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Other questions or comments? Mr. May?
I just had one question for Mr. Datman. The, I think it was Mr. Young had stated that raised the issue of Hyde Act consistency in that it exceeds 90 feet, which is, it's in the Hyde Act for residential neighborhood, and I'm wondering if you looked at that question?
As you can see, we didn't address it in the EDR. We did look at it, you know, as, in applying the Hyde Act to any zoning referral that we receive, as you know, the Hyde Act talks about business streets and residential streets. That is typically translated, in a zoning sense, to commercial zones and residential zones. Since the zoning that we're looking at on the north side of the site is a commercial zone, we would apply the width of the street plus 20, and the width of Michigan Avenue plus 20 is higher than the 115 feet that's being proposed right now.
Ms. White?
Yeah, ma'am. A couple of questions, if you could respond to the testimony. And we heard a lot of very passionate testimony about a variety of interpretations of federal interest. But I'm very curious about the view sheds. And I was struck by the testimony from the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the Executive Director of the Lincoln's Cottage. And I know in our documents that we received, you focused on the view shed from the Scott statue. And then in today's presentation, maybe you could go back to it for us. You did take a look, perhaps since this letter, on the view shed from the Lincoln Cottage. So my concern is with the recommendation here that the trust is making, that at a minimum, the proposal warrants a supplemental Section 106 review and consultation with the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. Have we heard from them? There's a reference in the staff report to, on May 27, 2014, NCPC staff requested the zoning commission keep the record open, allow staff to work with development team, District of Columbia Office of Planning, and others to investigate potential impacts. Was ACPH part of that?
They were not. We worked with the development team, Office of Planning, to conduct further modeling. I will say that the modeling that we prepared in preparation for our original comments to the zoning commission, we conducted that in-house using the data that we had available to us. The first thing that we did when we met with the development team is compared our models. And it turns out, they had much more accurate data than we did. So we agreed that that was going to be the baseline and look at what we had. It was less of an impact than we had modeled. However, there was still a need for some changes, which I took you through. The involvement of the ACPH, we did not engage ACPH. And in terms of the development on the site, I had alluded to that in the covenants, if the DC State of Historic Preservation Officer did not accept the development proposal that's proposed in front of you today, had he not accepted that proposal, there was the requirement in the covenants to actually refer to the ACPH. The DC shipo, as noted in a supplemental report from the Office of Planning to the zoning commission, did lay out their acceptance for the proposal, which equated to not triggering that referral to the advisory council. In our modeling, we did not specifically go out and engage with the advisory council.
And just so I'm clear, but you did look at the view sheds from the Lincoln Cottage during that? That's what I'm trying to get a sense of. Because I was really struck by the investment that the National Trust has made in that and the conditions that have changed because it wasn't there before, and now it is, and there are a lot of visitors. And this is an impact. And, you know, we talked a lot during the Hyde Act about the importance of those view sheds, and I just thought this was very compelling. Maybe we should take a further look at the impact on those view sheds.
In our original modeling, and we were in conversation with the Armed Forces Retirement Home, the people up there, we, our original modeling looked at the Scott statue. That is the one view shed that's identified as a protected view shed in the 2008 Armed Forces Retirement Home Master Plan. Other view sheds, for example, views that take place across the meadow, just south of the Scott Building, those are not identified as protected views in the master plan, but they are noted as maybe planning considerations. None of the views, either protected or planning considerations, are listed in the National Register, including the views from the Lincoln Cottage. Our original modeling did not look specifically at the Lincoln Cottage. We had just assumed that there wasn't going to be an impact based on our previous review of the Scott Building and the demolition of that building. We sort of looked at it then. Subsequent to our modeling, most recently this week, in conversation with the architect, we used their model and took a look at the elevations of the Lincoln Cottage and what's the existing view from the Lincoln Cottage, which is here, from the porch. This is the new Scott Building. And so the current view is not open. There may be intermittent views as you walk around the campus, like there are down in the meadow south of the Scott Building, but the view from the Lincoln Cottage is not there. We looked at sightlines to see even if all the mature canopy was taken out, whether or not it would open up an obstructed view to the Capitol. And what we found is that there's some existing buildings down in the southeast portion of the Armed Forces Retirement Home that potentially blocked that view. And then we used...
That potentially block, you say?
And then we used the model based on the elevations, using the very detailed data. This is a zoomed-in view, taken from the elevation of the Lincoln Cottage porch, which is elevation 335, looking south. And these are the two buildings that I just pointed out on the line-of-sight diagram. And so the view of the Capitol Building is already blocked by AFRH buildings that are proposed to be retained as part of the redevelopment of the southeast portion of the AFRH. That's the Lagarde Building and the Fourwood Building. And even from the second floor, approximately 10 feet higher than the porch of the Lincoln Cottage, you gain a little bit of the additional Capitol Dome, but not too much. Again, this is a zoomed-in view, and so if you look at the two images down here, this is really, again, without any kind of canopy on the site. This is the new Scott Building right here, looking south. The dome of the Capitol is just, you know, the Statue of Freedom on top of the Capitol is just punctuating over the rooftop of those buildings. And then from the second floor of the Lincoln Cottage, you get a little bit more.
This is, I'm assuming that if the commission determines there's no federal interest, again, that forecloses further opportunity for comment on the design and planning issues going forward. Is that correct?
That's correct. You'll get an opportunity to comment on the second stage of parcels two and three, but with pretty much a substantial portion of the development, yes, this is the last time you'll see it.
Okay.
Let me ask clarifying, and we've talked about it, but I may just not be getting it. My question is about the purported inconsistency with moderate density, though we say in the recommendation that it is consistent across medium and moderate. Can you help me unpack that one more time?
Sure. If you look at the 2007 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, which is in the district elements, it shows this site as a mix of uses, being moderate-density commercial, medium-density residential, moderate-density commercial, and parks and open space. Traditionally, you can translate those land uses to specific zoning categories. And so if you look at the map amendment that's being proposed here, the C3C and the CR, traditionally, those particular zoning designations will not fall within those land use designations. However, as Commissioner McCarthy has said, the 2007 land use map does say moderate-density, including other zone districts. And so in terms of laying out the, if you look at it from the perspective of square footage and FAR... footage and FAR, they are within their comprehensive plan land use allocations, traditional land use allocations. The reason why the buildings are high on the north side is because in working with the community, as I understand it, in order to provide the substantial park space on the south side of the site, some development was shifted to the north towards the hospital development and whatnot, which, because they're constrained, you know, by streets on either side, and, and the historic preservation constraints that exist above ground and below ground, the buildings got higher on the north side, which then resulted in NCPC staff communicating to the zoning commission that there could be a potential impact on views. That's what kind of triggered our work with the development team.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Detman, for that very comprehensive report. And I want to thank all the members of the public for your longstanding interest and concerns about this project. I just wanted to associate myself with, with Ms. McCarthy's comments and just also just highlight three things about the project that have nothing to do with the federal interest, but since they haven't been mentioned too often, I just wanted to make sure we don't forget that there's a 55,000 square foot grocery store that's part of this project. There's the, it's in the, it's in the NCPC staff, staff report. I just want to emphasize it. The senior affordable housing at no more than 60% AMI and the other affordable and market rate housing throughout the project, and the, the 17,000-plus square foot community recreation center, which will have an indoor swimming pool, which is beautifully designed. In fact, much of the design of this project has some very unique materials and placements, and I, and I think it'll, it'll be a benefit and be much more publicly accessible, because there hasn't, hasn't been anything publicly accessible forever on that site.
Ms. McCarthy?
And, and I could just briefly add to that. What cities have discovered, as you know, we've had a few major industries in the city that have been important for producing the income and the, the wealth, the value that provides for other city services. Federal government employment has been a key part of that. Federal government employment is going down. Our hospitality seems to be holding firm, but one area of economic importance that has been recognized and has been growing in importance and recognized nationally is what is referred to as eds and meds, but is, is recognizing that major medical facilities and educational facilities create import, they are important generators of not just economic value, but also larger kind of community wealth. And the, we have this amazing concentration of health facilities immediately north of this site. The National Rehabilitation Hospital, the MedStar, MedStar has two hospitals there, the VA Hospital, Children's National Medical Center, as well as Howard University and Catholic University and Trinity University within close proximity. The ability to take advantage of that, that incredible critical mass of educational medical facilities by being able to do the medical office buildings. Children's Hospital is so tight on their site, they have sent all of their back office functions to Silver Spring, and other, other medical facilities there have faced similar, similar difficulties of accommodating the demand for research as well as patient care. Children's no longer provides primary patient care on their site. They only do tertiary and research there. So having a facility like McMillan with the ability to provide for those medical research and medical office buildings is just, it's so important to the district's economic picture. I just wanted to mention that, as well as the benefits that Mr. Miller talked about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wells?
Yes, just one comment, since my colleagues have discussed the, the non-federal interest parts of this. I will say that, that I, I think on the one, I, I do support this. I think it makes a lot of sense in some ways for the city. But on the other side, I think on the transportation side, it really fails, that there's, as Ms. McCarthy just went over, the number of high-use folks that we're bringing to that area, we already have a stressed North Capitol Street during, during rush hour in the morning, and it's even filling up more and more, that what we don't see in the plan, and I don't think it's necessarily NCPC's scope, is we don't see a, a transit plan. I think that, and I'm part of the city, and I think the city has failed on that, and we're going to have to address it, but you don't see it in the fiscal, the footprint. Right across the street on the left side, of course, is the, is the hospital centers that we're talking about, and the other education institutions that we have that come along this corridor, especially down Michigan Avenue. And hopefully, we will look at figuring that out, but there's, the only asset or only positive thing in terms of transit is that hopefully, having amenities like a grocery store will reduce the number of needs, you know, short trips and cars and such that the neighbors and then people that live there need. But we do hope that the seniors and others that, that live on this site will not be car-dependent, and this is a very car-dependent neighborhood, and there's not a transportation plan or you don't, and again, it's not reflected into the, what you see here, that to incorporate a place to mass, a transit hub or something else. And hopefully, you know, we will get that addressed. But again, that's more of an ancillary comment to say that I think this site fails on that mark. If this were a base or something else where we spoke to the whole site, the conversation may be different today.
Thank you. Ms. McCarthy?
It, it may not have been specifically mentioned in the executive director's report, but there was considerable discussion at the zoning commission and considerable, the zoning commission was very clear that the initial commitments with respect to transit access to the site that the developers had made to agree to subsidize, zoning commission indicated that they didn't think the language had been a strong enough commitment, so that was beefed up substantially in the subsequent submissions. And, and it is, as you know, a potential corridor for, or a, a future corridor for the streetcar system connecting between Brookland and Columbia Heights, and perhaps going all the way to Woodley Park.
Final comments. Hearing now, the EDR before us is to approve the comments on the zoning, the, the report to the zoning commission, specifically being that the first stage of the PUD is not, the map amendment is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Any further discussion? Is there a motion? It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. That's the last action item. We do have one more item, and that is an information presentation as an update on the Eisenhower Memorial. And we'll suspend for just a moment as folks excuse themselves.
I think everybody knows me already. Alex is going to talk as a part of the presentation. I don't think, no, I don't think so.
The last item on the agenda today is the information presentation or an update on the status of the Eisenhower Memorial since our last meeting, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Detman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief in my introduction. We have Mr. Craig Webb here from Gary Partners to provide you with an update as requested by the commission in its previous action. You'll be receiving an update on lighting, perimeter security, pedestrian circulation, as well as an update on some recent, the recent CFA response. NCPC's previous actions and CFA's previous two letters have been provided to you.
Welcome back. Have you bought a house here yet?
Sorry. I'm going to be back soon, sooner than later.
Welcome back.
Good afternoon, commissioners. It's a pleasure to address you once again. So following preliminary approval on October 2nd of this commission, we subsequently went to the Commission of Fine Arts on October the 16th and received approval. So we were taking back to them the plans that you had approved, because it was different than the plans that were previously approved by the Commission of Fine Arts, and they approved the revised plans. We will be going back to the CFA two weeks from now with a much more detailed presentation on the design of the memorial, including the art on the tapestry, the sculpture, landscape, and so on. So that, that presentation's going to happen two weeks from now. I'd like to be brief today. We just have three issues that were left unresolved in the EDR previously, and so I think the largest of those is the lighting design, and I'm going to turn over to my lighting designer, Alex Miller, who will present lighting design, and then we'll pick up the other two more minor issues following that.
As he comes up, let me just ask a question. Landscape design will come back at a later time, I presume? Landscaping issues?
Well, landscape at the, at the Commission of Fine Arts will come back. I'm not sure if, whether you want us to come back and address landscape. I think we've already addressed it on previous presentations.
It'll come back in final, won't it?
It'll come back in final.
Yes.
I didn't know it was going to come back as an update prior to final.
Yeah, but there haven't, so there have been no changes to the landscape design in any of the presentation. Well, there was a change in the last presentation we made on October the 2nd, which adjusted the landscape based on the removal of the east and west tapestries. Since then, there's been no changes to the landscape design.
Okay.
And so we will come back in final.
In final, right. Okay, thank you.
So the three issues we're going to talk about today are lighting design, the security of the, of the education building, and then pedestrian circulation. So I'll turn over to Alex Miller to talk about lighting design.
In terms of the lighting design, we'll start with the, the city at large. We...
I'm sorry, just can you introduce yourself just for the record?
I'm Alex Miller. I'm with L'Observatoire Lighting.
Thank you very much.
And with the name of L'Observatoire, working with the Lanfont Urban Design Plan, we understand from a lighting point of view, the ideas that went into this plan originally. So this is one of the earlier Ellicott Lanfont planning schemes for Washington, D.C. And what we did from a lighting point of view is we looked at the, the city overall and looked at the, the avenues and the icons. The avenues are the, obviously, the roadways that connect the different nodes or, or icons that dot the city, the memorials, the Capitol Building, et cetera. And so we did a lot of study of what each of these things looked like at night. So of course, we have the, the memorial buildings identified and glowing in the, in the urban skyline at night. But what also is kind of binding the city together at night is the avenues themselves. So the avenues, the street lighting, the way that it's an ambient version of light actually creates these volumes of light. So, you know, there's some images at the bottom of the page here that show different existing avenues, and you can kind of see this corridor of light that's created just with the street lighting itself. And our site is along one of these avenues, so we wanted to respect that same notion of a corridor of light. So between the tapestry element that kind of consistently embraces the site on one side, and the landscape itself, the horizontal plane that is green space and trees and paving between those two elements, we, we are trying to create a volume of light that, that is continuous with the avenue in which the site sits. And you can see just the, the image of the tapestry mock-up that we concluded in years past for reference. So we'll kind of talk through some renderings that we did, montages that we did based on the Gary physical models. So this is a view looking along the Maryland Avenue axis during the daytime, looking towards the Capitol Building, and transitioning into the nighttime view. Obviously, what was critical for us and given input from all the different committees and commissions was the prominence of the Capitol Dome itself when looking along this axis. So you see the, the tapestry element on the right side, it's the backside of the tapestry in this view, and then you see the column element on the left side of this view. The, the tapestry itself is uplit from below, so right along the surface itself, it's a, it's a grazing light. And that light actually falls off very intentionally as it gets to the top of the, the tapestry, so it blends with the night sky. And some of you may have seen that with the, the mock-up that we did, but, you know, it kind of fades, fades to dark as it gets to the top. So from this view, it's a very, you know, the, the lighting doesn't compete with the Capitol. As you look down into the site itself, all the lighting is kept down around the ground plane. It's at the human scale, there's not a lot of glare, so there's not fixtures that kind of impede your view to the Capitol Building. Very strategically, this view corridor is, is maintained directly to the Capitol. Then as you move into the site itself, again, on the Maryland Avenue axis, but in the green space of the, of the project, again, the, the view corridor to the Capitol is maintained. And again, as we transition to the nighttime, the lighting is directed towards the green space. In, from this view, we're directing light down towards the, the horizontal plane on which people are walking. Again, the, the glare is, is left to a minimum, so it's not like a typical street light that's glowing very ambiently. It's directing light down so that you can see directly up beyond the site's boundaries. And then you can see the, the paved paths that cross over from the memorial core out to the perimeters of the site, kind of move through this view as well. But again, the lighting is maintained in a similar way. We kind of looked at it like a layering of light. So you have a layer of light that's on the ground plane, a layer of light that's on the understory of the tree canopies. We're uplighting some of the, the lower-level trees. Then we have the memorial core itself, so all the light that kind of blinds the memorial core, and then we have the tapestry lighting is the uppermost layer of light. So again, moving around the site from Independence Avenue, looking back towards the memorial core. And again, so this is a really good example of the layering of light that I was just referring to. So obviously, in the foreground from the street side, you have a lot of the ambient light of the city, you have a lot of the ambient light of the pedestrian poles that go along the, the walkways, and then the roadway lighting itself. Then as you move into our site along the green space, we have that lighting that's glowing that, that carpet of green. And then we have the memorial blocks a little bit further back, which I'll, we'll discuss a little bit more in detail, and then we have the tapestry behind those memorial blocks. So, and again, you can begin to see here that tapestry, how it fades off to dark into the night sky. So a little bit of a zoom in at the memorial core elements. So the, the memorial blocks are a layer of lighting in that they have continuous uplight, a linear uplight that happens behind the sculptural elements, also on the, the text wall that's behind the, the memorial blocks. It's a continuous uplight element, very soft, very subtle, again, very human scale, but that gives a backdrop for the, the sculptures themselves, the artwork itself. So we're actually spotlighting the face of those so that they're allowed a certain prominence. So between the uplighting and that face lighting, we get like a really intense layering that, that highlights those memorial blocks. And again, you see the, the tapestry behind that's being upglowed. A little bit of a zoom in of one of the memorial blocks. So again, we have a continuous uplight just behind the sculpture. We have a spotlight on the faces of the sculpture that's achieved with a framing projector, very specific light that lights only those objects and nothing around them, and then the tapestry beyond. The other memorial element, World War II vignette. So, again, same approach as the other with a continuous backlight. We're facelighting the sculptures. The text above is illuminated also with a framing projector. But again, the idea here is that we have continuous lighting that binds all these memorial elements together, and then we have just little subtle moments of additional light here and there around these areas. A view along one of the paved pathways, so we're now at the perimeter of the site, kind of looking back towards the memorial core along the paved areas. So, this is a view that really represents some of the other lighting techniques that we're using. So, we have a series of pedestrian poles that dance along the pathway that works into the center of the site. Those illuminate the paving, the paved areas, just like they do in the landscape zones. We also have lighting integrated into the underside of the benches. The idea, again, being that it's a very human scale of light. So, it's inviting, it's very warm, it's not something that's coming from above, it's a lot more intimate. Then, we upglow the understory of the lower trees. So, in this case, they're represented as blossoming trees, so we're uplighting those pretty consistently. So, it's the lower-level tree canopy that gets uplit. Standing more at the memorial core, looking back towards the perimeter of the site. So, again, similar ideas represented here. We have the underbench lighting that's glowing some of the paved pathways. That's supplemented by some of the pedestrian poles that are, again, glowing that same surface. And then, we have the upglow for the lower tree story. And then, from the very perimeter of the site. So, similar to the other view from Independence where we have the ambient light from the street, the ambient light from the pedestrian poles that kind of glows, you know, where we're standing now. And the idea behind the memorial core is that it's kind of the heart of the site, and we wanted the lighting to feel like, you know, it's, you know, a lantern at the center of the site, so it draws people into that area. So, again, you can kind of get a feel for that layering where you've got the memorial core that holds it, and then these subtle touches of light that are lower as they come out to the perimeter of the site. That's it.
So, then, two more issues, security and pedestrian circulation. So, we have had two meetings with NCPC staff over videoconferencing, working on the resolution of these issues. The first being the perimeter security of the education building, which in this slide is on the bottom of the slide. And so, the red line represents the security line that's required to protect the education building, most of which is handled by the site walls, the change in grade between the main part of the memorial site and the promenade, which is across kind of the center of that slide. The desire, I think, and the comments from NCPC staff were that we were trying, we were using bollards in many of these locations to create perimeter security. It's basically vehicle security that's created, that's necessary. And comment was that that brought the security issue way too far to the forefront, and so were there other ways we could try and achieve security, try and eliminate the bollards. And we have done that in two locations that I'll show you. Mainly, the one, let's see, so this is zooming in, let me go back one. So... Closest to the memorial core itself, we felt, was the most critical part and the part to try and resolve in the best way. And so, on those stairways on either side of this overlook platform, we've taken the bollards out. The maximum width allowable for security perimeter is four feet. And so, what we've done is put limestone walls that break up the stairway into those four-foot zones. So, we've substituted limestone walls for the bollards, which is more integrated with the design. And you can see, and we're trying to minimize the impact of those limestone walls. So, the section of the upper side, you see that we're sloping the top of those intermediate limestone walls to try and lessen their impact. And then, there are four feet in between each of the stairways there. The other area that was of question are the, these kind of stepped mini amphitheaters that were a part of the programming that we're trying to work on with the Department of Education to create these kind of mini amphitheaters that were spaces that could be used for interpretive meetings. And previously, we had bollards across each of these openings. The requirement for security on the site is that you need a wall of at least two foot six in height in order to stop vehicles from coming up and accessing the education building. These amphitheater steps, these kind of seating steps are only 18 inches, which is something that works for people to sit on, not high enough to stop a vehicle. So, the solution we're proposing is to put a wall, which you see kind of in the section That wall forms a kind of seatback for the upper tier of the kind of seating area, and also is two foot six in height, and so therefore satisfies the requirement, and so we're able to eliminate the bollards in that position as well. On either end of the promenade, we looked at trying to use the same kind of strategy. So, on the west end, there's a very wide opening coming off of Sixth Street. Putting solid walls in that location in that kind of rhythm became a very obtrusive site element, and so we feel that maintaining the bollards in that position is the best solution, the most minimal solution. And the same on the eastern side, coming off of Fourth Street. So, in those two locations, we're proposing to maintain the bollards. And I think closest to the memorial core, we've been able to eliminate the bollards, and then on either end, which were further away, we've decided to keep the bollards. In terms of pedestrian circulation, our interpretation of how the site is going to be accessed is primarily from the corners of Independence Avenue and Fourth and Sixth Street, and we've talked about that a lot. The diagonal pathways that lead from those corner access points to the memorial core through this kind of stepping stone of these more intimate spaces with seating, we believe, is going to be the primary access to the memorial core, and then secondary access coming off of the promenade next to the education building. We've talked a lot with staff about where desire lines might develop across the lawn. One of the areas that was of concern were the two breaks in the tree line along Independence Avenue where we've created these kind of view corridors onto the site. And the concern was that people who stopped for a kind of photo opportunity at that point may go from there directly toward the memorial core. In order to maintain the naturalistic feeling of the site and to maintain as much green space as possible, we've resisted adding paved pathways that basically follow what might become desire lines in the future. So, we did talk with...
I'm sorry. I'm disoriented on the bollards. In looking at this site, where are the bollards?
So, the two areas I'm talking about are here.
Okay.
Those are the ones that are maintained.
So, there's no bollards?
Here, right here.
So, there's none around the perimeter? Okay, got it. Good.
So, the memorial site itself does not require a secure perimeter. It's the education building that does. So, there's no, there are no bollards around the perimeter of the memorial. It's the education building that's being protected. So, in terms of desire lines from those points along Independence Avenue, and this is the view that you've seen previously from Independence looking toward the memorial core, there's two openings in the tree line along those sides. We did a lot of kind of sitewalking on the mall, looking at kind of pedestrian and visitor, you know, tourist activity. One of the strange things we discovered was that people like to get their picture taken standing in the grass, and it's some kind of a human nature thing, but no matter how wide the sidewalk is, and I watched a lot of people do this, they always step off onto the grass in order to get their pictures taken. Don't ask me why. I guess it's a simpler frame of view or something. So, we looked at widening the Independence Avenue sidewalk to try and give more kind of breathing room, from the current proposal of 20 feet to 25 and 30 feet. And because of that kind of human behavior, we figured we could continue widening it forever, and we'd never really solve that problem. In discussion with staff, I think we all agreed that leaving the 20-foot sidewalk, which is a very ample urban sidewalk, was adequate. So, we decided not to widen the sidewalk. I think in discussions with Park Service, if desire lines develop in the future, then I think, you know, it's very hard to say where they're going to happen, but I think, you know, to come back and try and remediate that would be a better approach than to just start paving more and more areas of the site, trying to anticipate where the desire lines might occur in the future. And I'm sorry, let me go back a couple. The other, the other issue we talked about with staff was whether Maryland Avenue itself, the main axes, would become a desire line. Again, it's really difficult to determine whether that is, but it's really key in this design to keep that green space. And we looked at, and we showed staff, different options that we looked at for paving narrower strips and kind of sidewalk elements running along the Maryland Avenue axes. And each of those, we felt, really defeated that feeling of green space, open space. And we, I guess, we don't really believe that's going to become a major desire line. I think the pedestrian circulation around the site really will stay on the street edges and then on the diagonal axes. So, we're proposing not to put any paved area along the Maryland Avenue axes.
Let me ask, you've done this a long time. Looking at that and your knowledge of the site, where would you make a wild guess that desire lines would likely form?
Well, we think that the main desire lines are the ones we've already paved, which are the diagonals from, you know, because pedestrians cross at the corners, and that's the logical place where people enter any particular block. We feel like the Independence Avenue corners of Fourth and Sixth are going to be the main desire lines, and the paved pathways that we've created on the diagonals are the main desire lines on the site. So, we think we've paved the ones that we think are going to be the most important.
You don't think folks are going to walk up the historic cart path of Maryland Avenue?
I do think we're anticipating that people will walk on the grass on the lawn, and we want them to. I mean, a part of the experience of the kind of park space of the site is the experience of getting out onto the grass, under the tree canopy. So, I do think people will walk on the Maryland Avenue axes. I don't think it's a major desire line, but I think we want people to use this as a park. We've talked about that a lot, as being, you know, a park amenity for the neighborhood and for the city. And so, we feel like, and we've done a lot of work on getting the right kind of turf. We've looked a lot at the mall turf program. We're a little different than that, but we're, and we're learning from what's happening on the test pads that they're doing on the mall. So, I do think people will walk on the Maryland Avenue axes, and I think, I think that the turf design we're proposing will handle that.
I think the other place where you're going to have a lot of foot traffic, which is going to be impossible to control, is off of these little niches for the reed allowed, which is good, right? I mean, I don't know how, can you go back to that section slide that shows the, you know, the stadium seating, for lack of another word?
So, there is, there is paving in front of those.
Right. So, there'll be, and coming off of there, let's say, you know, I think kids will be inclined to hop off of there and go under the tapestry and check it out. But I don't see, I'm really glad to see that you have not put something mid-block, because that, I mean, if people do, if there is a social path that's formed, I think that we need to discourage that. I really do, because the traffic coming out of that, can you go back now to the plan on, that shows the circulation patterns? The door across the street to the Air and Space Museum, where, do you have a slide that shows exactly where that is?
I don't think I do, but I think it's further to the left.
It's right there. But is there another door that is further down the block? So, there's no way they can come out that way?
Well, there's also no pedestrian crossing across Independence.
Exactly.
Other than that corner.
That's, I mean, because there was, at one point, we were talking about mid-block access, which I think would be disastrous to encourage. So, I mean, I get the idea of the vistas, but I'm, I wonder if there shouldn't be some kind of discouraging plantings. I don't know. I guess we'll have to, you have to see.
We originally had a wall across that center portion of the site, which I, I think, and we removed it, and I think we agreed that removing it gave more of an inviting feeling to the site. So, I don't think we regret removing that wall. I mean, to put a barrier there, I think, I think we believe is the wrong body language for what the memorial site should be.
Yes, I agree. I agree. And I just want to say thank you for the security solution, because we have to do it, but the fewer bollards, the better.
Comments? That concludes your presentation?
Yes.
Going once, going twice? Thank you, Mr. Webb, very much. It's been a long meeting. Is there anything else to come before us? The answer to that is no. Thank you all for your diligence. We're adjourned. It's been a long meeting. Is there anything else to come before us? The answer to that is no. Thank you all for your diligence. We're adjourned.